Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. It's currently 6:16 in the evening. And this is the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities. We're meeting today in the Beverly Middle School Library. And although we are running Zoom so that our friends at BevCam can both record and stream, we have no members attending remotely. Our finance director is in the Zoom to be able to do a screen share. So we do not need to take roll call votes. And we'll just get right started with the, I don't need to read our little statement about meeting remotely because we have no one joining remotely. So Ms. Emma, can we please go to the next slide, which shows our agenda for the evening? Our first order of business is to vote on last month's meeting minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Getting your name into the records right at the end. I appreciate that. Are there any comments, questions, corrections of the meeting minutes? Seeing none, again, we do not need to do a roll call vote. No one's online. All those in favor of approval? That passes four to zero. I should have said, we have this evening in the room with us Ms. Julie Flowers as our city council representative, city council president, Ms. Flowers. And we have Ms. Emma Puglisi, our Director of Finance. We have Erin Brown, the Assistant Superintendent. Ms. Coelho, I should have done the roll call so that you could capture that for me in the meeting minutes. Committee Member-Elect Ms. Ducharme is here. At the table, we have citizen rep, resident rep, Mr. Manzo. Committee members, Coelho, Visnick, and Silva. Also in the room running technology for us, thank goodness, is Ms. Abel. Okay, our next order of business, yes, Ms. Puglisi?
Before we dive all the way into the agenda, there was a piece of news, sort of late breaking yesterday, that got announced. I just had included it to bring forward, to share. For those of you who may not already be made aware that yesterday afternoon, the U.S. Department of Education informed state education leaders of its intent to transition the management of several major programs to other federal agencies, including but not limited to a number of our grant programs, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act, among others. At this time, IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is our special education funding, remains at USED along with the Office of Civil Rights. At this time, there is no meaningful information about what this will do procedurally for districts. And Desi will share more information as they have more information to share. But I imagine that folks will start to be hearing about this, if they have not already, in the news. And so I wanted to make sure that I took an opportunity to share that information. Similarly, I did also just want to give a quick update now that we are at FNF. We had the longest on record government shutdown at 43 days, I believe. And we are still no closer to information about what that means for federal grants for what is state and local FY '27. Of the items that got resolved prior to the government reopening, that was not one of them. So not necessarily great news, but news that is still relevant. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to share that before we dove too far into the agenda today.
All right. So while we're on that topic then, my understanding is that what was signed to reopen the government is also, is only a temporary measure. So we could be back debating these same topics or talking about these topics in January?
Yes, that is correct. The one piece of positive information that I have heard relative to this is that in the reopening, they did pass legislation that will keep USDA, and so school meals, funded through September 30th of '26. So our school nutrition programs will continue to be funded. School nutrition is not forward-funded, but like our grants are, and so it could be more easily impacted by a government shutdown. So that is a good piece of news.
Because they've already committed to funding it through
Through the end.
Through the summer.
Yes, through the end of their fiscal year. So that has a funding commitment.
Okay.
Not a continuing resolution.
All right. So this is late breaking news. Does anybody, I don't know that Ms. Puglisi has any additional information, but does anybody have any comments or questions on this particular piece of information before we go to the next item on the agenda? Okay. Now entering the room, we should have like, what's your walk-up song? All right. Resident rep Dominic Copeland. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is our Buildings and Grounds report. And again, our, the way we normally handle this is that the report was in your packet. Everybody had a chance to take a look at it. Does anybody have any questions about the BNG report that they'd like to pose to Ms. And I'm just going to remind all of us that if and when we have questions, it would be best if we sent them ahead of time because then Emma has a chance to talk to the maintenance guys, the maintenance team, and maybe get us answers. Otherwise, we might have to do a little bit of back and forth. All right, this is not a voting item. We don't vote on the BNG report. It is just here for our information. However, item three on our agenda begins our items for approval. So we have a request to add a student activity account for the Beverly High School class of 2029. So the little piece of paper was in your, in your packet. I'll just remind everybody, we have recommitted ourselves to following our own policy about being really good about adding accounts every year and getting rid of, voting to get rid of our old accounts. And so anybody have any questions about this particular account? Actually, before we discuss, I'm looking for a motion that we approve the addition of this student activity account.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you. Now, anybody have any questions, comments, reservations for dinner or otherwise? Okay, all those in favor of adding this activity account? That passes five to zero, Ms. Coelho, now that Mr. Copeland is here. Okay, our next item is a number of budget transfers, and these were in your packets. And we'll bring the first one up on the screen. Is there only one this week?
Only one this week.
There's only one this week. Fantastic. Got a little tricked by the S on the agenda.
My apologies.
All right. Ms. Emma, why don't you talk to this first, and then I will ask for a motion?
Absolutely. So at our last meeting, I had brought forward a very large journal entry to allocate from the reserve the funds to the appropriate salary accounts for both lane changes and specialized degree placement for our Unit A members. There were two that got left off of my list, and so this is to make those accounts balanced.
To make whole.
Mm-hmm.
Finish the job. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve this particular budget transfer. Thank you, Mr. Manzo. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any questions for Ms. Emma before I call the roll? Which is not really a roll, before I call the vote. All right. Oh, yes, you have a question, Dr. Silva.
So in terms of negotiation, the negotiations and the funds needed for post-negotiations, is this the final transfer?
So this is the final transfer to award lane changes and, which are a contractual obligation, and the specialized degrees was new language that became effective in this year. So I don't expect, you know, that chunk in future years. This is everybody that has been approved to date. If there is anybody who is still working through with HR, you know, I think I'm here, no, I think I'm here. Oh, you might not have seen my transcript, but actually I do have it, and it's over here. That might still be working out. We could still see, you know, a little bit here or there. We do still have a balance in that account of about $20,000. So should anything pop up, we would be able to address it.
Thank you.
All right, last call. Any other questions, comments? All right, there's a motion on the table that we accept this budget transfer. All those in favor? That passes five to zero. Okay, the next item for our attention, we have a series of policies this evening. Our first one, and I, you know, Mr. Crowley is going to be disappointed in me because I haven't studied my little military alphabet. G-B-E-B-D, online fundraising and soliciting slash crowdfunding. Ms. Emma, are you, yes, I love it. All right, so everybody at the table, you should have had this in your packet. And for those who are playing along at home, we're putting it up on the screen. It's kind of a long policy, doesn't quite fit on one page. There are no changes to this policy, right? We don't see any markups? Oh, yes, Ms. Emma?
So this is, would be a new policy for Beverly. So this one was an MASCE's policy guide. This one came to our attention in our last meeting because it's referenced in G-B-E-B-C, which we had started discussion of last week for potential decision, was something we would want to adopt or something that we might want to boil down and abbreviate and add as a sentence or two into our other policy.
Right. Because we don't, we specifically do not talk about crowdsourcing in the policy that we do already have.
Correct. And there, MASCE added this policy as they sort of saw a boom in online crowdfunding, fundraising that had previously not been addressed. And as it was becoming more and more prevalent, it became, okay, maybe we might want some parameters around that.
Right. So I'm going to say to finance committee members, I am happy if you want to punt this particular policy to the policy committee to really look at and study the policy, whether we could combine them more easily or not, unless somebody else has already done that homework. That is an option. I guess we'll, I just want to make that available to everybody as an option. The other thing is that I think we should have some discussions around the, what are the implications of adopting this policy based on what we see happening already in our district? And to that extent, I wish Dr. Cushing were here, and, and maybe I wish the rest of the committee were here to talk about what do we see? Do we see, I know what I see. I see a lot of people doing, hey, please contribute, I have an online GoFundMe-ish kind of thing. And it's maybe for a booster group, or it's maybe for a trip. And my belief is that every single type of fundraising like that needs to get an approval from the superintendent of schools. At least that's what our base policy says, and our base policy does not cover crowdsourcing. So that's, that's the general gist of why this policy is in front of us and where the hole is. And given that introduction, I'm looking to this committee for what do we want to do?
Can I add one other piece that I do feel like is important in this policy that is not in our other policy due to the nature of online crowdsourced fundraising, is that it makes the distinction that items, because it's, you know, a lot of those, like donors choose, that people are donating, and then the actual item arrives. And it makes clear that those donations are donations to the district and not to the employee, which does two things. It makes it the property of the district, but also then makes it exempt from any conflict of interest that could be considered as a gift. So sort of a twofold piece there that is important in this language, I do think.
Okay. So if, if we chose to fold in, we would want to make sure we picked up that piece.
That would be my preference, yes.
I would like to make a motion to put this off so that we can read it and
But keep it here? Bring it back in a month when you're, when, when you won't be here? That's not very nice of you. It is the holiday season.
But I do, I do think since it is new and it is being done, there needs to be some thought into what the implications are that you mentioned.
Okay. Ms. Coelho.
I kind of agree. I'd have to put this off because in the past, teachers have had Amazon wish lists to help get school supplies that are much needed, that parents have had no problem donating to classrooms to help, that are much needed supplies to help their own children. And I think this would, would hinder that. So I think that should be tabled for a full committee discussion.
Yes, Ms. Flowers?
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Of course.
May I ask a question? So my question is, and I think, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to clarify. Maybe you can help. This policy, Ms. Visnick, you referenced boosters. I'm curious, so this is, this policy would pertain to anybody who's fundraising in official capacity for the public schools? So I'm assuming that would include, well, I don't know, actually, PTOs, boosters, and employees? Or is there some distinction made between who, who we're talking about under this policy?
So this policy specifically names school district employees. Excuse me. So this policy specifically names school district employees. However, because booster groups do potentially have different authorizations, and again, if they are fundraising, they are doing it sort of through their own entity. And so similarly, they would be the recipient, and then they would then potentially donate it to us. And then that would, again, fall under one of our other accepting donations policies, where if it's of, you know, educational value, it can be accepted by the superintendent. If it's of monetary value, it would come before this committee and then the committee at large.
Thank you. That's helpful. So this policy really would pertain to district employees, and then those other entities that are operating could fundraise as they are. And then what happens when the gift comes to the district is that next step?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Visnick.
Yes, Mr. Copeland.
Yes, I think I agree with the other members. I don't think we're prepared to move forward to take a vote on it at this point. There's, there's many far-reaching implications of this I don't think we have explored yet. And I think we'll need to do that first before we decide how to move forward with it.
Okay, so our options are that we can hold it in our own group and take an action item that our next meeting, we are in November, so we should, we still do have a December FNF meeting on the calendar. So we could all come back in approximately three, four weeks, three weeks, I think, with our proposals, with our respective proposals. We could punt it to policy. We could punt it to the committee of the whole. There's probably another possibility in there, which is to try to sit down for, like me as the chair, to sit down with the administration and then bring back to the next meeting a recommendation. Yes, Mr. Manzo?
So I favor the last pathway. I mean, you are the chair. You get to decide what this group takes up on a monthly basis. And so, so I think it's reasonable for you to decide whether or not you want to bring it back to this group or to another group. The one suggestion I would make is that since this is a relatively new policy, it's 2022 in MASCE, that a lot of schools, districts probably dealing with the same questions. And so it might be worth just looking around at some other districts to say, how did they, how did they adopt this? Did they boil it down? Did they, did they adopt it as is? And so my suggestion would be, you know, pick, pick a handful, three or four districts to just look at and say, how did they do it? And that's, you know, letting someone else do some of your work for you is never a bad thing.
Okay, I like that suggestion. All right, so I'm looking for a motion that we kind of table this guy, right? Was that your motion? Table?
And I seconded it.
Okay. So let's vote on tabling this motion. All those in favor? Okay, that passes five to nothing. How about our next policy? Let's see. G-B-E-B-C, gifts to and solicitations by staff. All right. So how about, in this view, this is great because you guys can see Donna's comments, which she's fantastic, and we're going to hope that when we find a new Donna, that the new Donna does the same things for us. You can see her comments on the right about what has been changed here or the proposed changes. Again, I'll remind us, we can accept these changes, we can leave the policy exactly as is and just say we reviewed it on this date, or any one of you can bring forward additional amendments. So as a starting point, I will ask for a motion to approve, as it is shown on your screen, with the few edits that we've been working on, going through all of our policies and updating them relative to pronouns and caregivers versus parents and guardians. And Ms. Emma, would you like to speak to the red? Is it red? Is it purple? I don't know.
I'm going to let, I'll let anybody decide independently, somewhere in the maroon burgundy family, perhaps? This is new language added by MASCE, relative specifically to raffles and games of chance, and a new legal reference related as such. So it is longstanding mass general law that municipal organizations cannot participate in gambling activities, and that does include raffles. Booster organizations can, as 501(c)(3) is provided that they file for the appropriate permits with the city clerk and do all of their appropriate tax filings and all that afterward. However, they are not allowed for municipal organizations. And while not included in this, it is also of note that gambling activities does include the sale of raffle tickets, and minors cannot participate in gambling activities.
And so my question to you before I ask for a motion is, are, is it, are we behooving ourselves by explicitly reminding? I, I don't know that anyone outside of boosters does raffles. However, is the point just to explicitly say our staff, municipal, the municipality and all of its employees cannot do this?
Yes. So it's really that, right? It is law. And so we have had conversations about when do we make, you know, when do we fold policy into law? I do think it is helpful in that this is not necessarily a law that folks may be regularly familiar with. And this would also include our student groups, right? Because they are, so the boosters organizations can. So for instance, the basketball boosters can host a raffle. The basketball team cannot.
Okay.
Similarly, a, you know, a PTO or a parent group could host a raffle. The senior class club could not.
Okay. All right. So let's start, if there's more of a discussion, we'll have more of a discussion. Let's start with a motion to approve this policy as is edited on your screen.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho and Mr. Manzo. Dr. Silva, I see your eyebrows over there. You're looking not a lot of happy.
The fact of the matter is, is lots of boosters and organizations hold raffles. And when you participate in a raffle in a booster event, it's considered, people consider it a donation. It's not, they don't consider it gambling. It's just part of, you know, the, the activity that you go to, the event for the purposes of donating for the, you know, to benefit the organization.
Fifty-fifty. A fifty-fifty raffle, for example.
Right. So I just, I think the, including this, whether we include it or not, are we forced to include this?
We are not forced to include it, but this is, again, just reiterating what is state law. So absent it being included here, it would still be a governing rule.
Right, it would still be true. But let's, let's roll this example forward a little bit. That's a great, I think it's a great way to spend some of our time. So I go to a sporting event, and somebody's walking around with a bucket saying, I'm selling fifty-fifty raffle tickets. And I buy a fifty-fifty raffle ticket. Well, I'm of legal age, times like five. And so I'm, I'm all right. The issue is who's selling that raffle ticket? And if it's the booster club for the team that's playing, then we're all good, right? If it's the actual team, then we're not good, right? So, and that's true of mass general law. So is that, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand where your
Are there, are there laws that we should include in this that pertain to this, that we should also research and print into this document to let people know that other relevant articles or laws that should go into this?
Not that are at top of mind for me, and seemingly not for the folks at MASCE. They are the ones recommending that language. It is, right, raffles and games of chance fall under that same section of law.
Yeah.
It's because of the baseball players controversy.
Yeah.
It's a fallout from that, right? Meaning that gambling is in the news right now. This is a big, this is a big point of contention, right? People have been caught cheating and fixing games relative to gambling on those games, right? This is quite in the news right now.
The state sponsors gambling with tickets and, and
Absolutely, it does.
I just see it as hypocritical.
Okay, yes, Ms. Flowers?
Thank you. I'm just asking another clarifying question. It, it seems to me that the state's main concern is that minors can't participate in buying or selling raffle tickets or game, or play games of chance or gamble. So it sounds like, if I'm correct, it would not, this would not change what our boosters or PTOs are allowed to do. It would just regulate what students can participate in doing for a team or a club. Is that correct?
It would regulate what students are allowed to do, and again, what they're allowed to do while operating, operating under a district-sponsored organization.
Thank you. So it's not dissimilar, sorry, thanks for walking me through this. It doesn't feel dissimilar from the fact that my 14-year-old can't buy a scratch ticket, but an eight, someone who's 18 or older can.
Correct.
And so this would just be making sure that our, it sounds like, making sure that our boosters or PTOs and anybody, I guess, who's an advisor for a student club or organization or a coach is aware, just so that we can maintain that
Exactly.
That boundary. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Copeland.
And I think going on that step further, it also means, for example, if it's the basketball team, the coaches themselves could not do that either, because it's still on behalf of the basketball team. So the basketball team itself, as a district organization or any other district organization, cannot be involved in those activities. It would have to be on their behalf, a PTL or something officially outside of the district. So even if the person was over 18, it would still apply.
Correct.
I'm feeling bad because I don't know what to say, because I agree with you that it's hypocritical, and it is the state law. And by not putting it in our policy, by like hiding it, we're not helping ourselves. I, I personally feel that there are a lot of fundraising activities that do not even go in front of him to get his signature. And part of what we need to do is to make it more clear, make our policies better known relative to fundraising. And at least once in the past, we had a meeting at the beginning of every season with the athletic director that said, hey, coaches, this is on you to go tell your booster groups that they need to do this. And PTOs, this is on you, that you have to do this. And, and part of, part of informing the public about that really should be helping us if everybody realized how much fundraising, everybody If everybody realized how much fundraising everybody else was doing, it is a burden on our community to do all that fundraising. It's a burden on our small businesses that they get asked by a whole bunch of different booster groups, you know, "Give me a gift, will you donate a gift card, or will you do this, or will you do that?" So in some ideal space in my head, I think that if we were more explicit in our policies, more people, and we worked on really advertising them, spreading the word, a lot of good would come from that, including but not limited to trying to raise the awareness of how much of an impact it is on our community. Not to mention, I don't want anybody under 18 doing this and getting in trouble, and then people saying, "Well, we didn't know."
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Cushing?
Thank you, Member Visnick. So this has caused quite a bit of hullabaloo for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, where they actually just yesterday issued a document from Attorney Kelly Gonzalez. And one section of that five-page, six-page document talks about district oversight. And so districts play a key oversight role in improving and monitoring fundraising activities. The level of oversight depends on whether a group is considered internal or external. Internal groups are school-sponsored and formed in accordance with district policy, allowing the district to exercise full control of their operations. External groups, by contrast, are independently incorporated nonprofits, in theory, and not formed under school sponsorship. In this case, the district has more limited control over these organizations, but may impose compliance requirements as a condition of association with the district. I would, I have not had a chance yet to meet with any of our booster organizations. I've been meeting with our PTO organizations, and will be moving on to meet with our booster organizations. But my sense is that the booster organizations operate largely independently of the district while supporting district activities, say the football boosters club or the soccer booster club. She continues to go on, "As a matter of passage, districts should require proof of 501(c)(3) status, such as correspondence from the IRS. As part of their process for approving fundraising activities, districts should also require that any changes in 501(c)(3) status should be communicated properly. Additionally, districts should also confirm that any organization conducting raffles or games of chance holds the necessary permits." So, you know, I think that leaves also open for us to really start looking at how the district operates in relation to our booster's organizations, and really dive into guidance that has been provided from other districts as well around that. Because ultimately, generally speaking, in my experience of long time doing this, is that it's usually the junior varsity team members who are happily running through the stands, passing the hat and handing out tickets. I don't want to say that's what happens in Beverly, because I haven't directly seen that with my own eyes. But, you know, if those things are happening, we have to communicate with our boosters club that, no, it can't be children under the age of 18. And I would argue even children over the age of 18, but, you know, we're then splitting hairs.
All right. And I guess what I want to say to that is traditionally, our booster organizations and our PTOs have, and even our youth sports are all volunteer-driven. And it's very difficult to quote-unquote "make a volunteer do something." And many of our organizations have incorporated and come up to holding their own 501(c)(3). There are other organizations that have kind of operated as an umbrella, and to say, any given other organization, yes, there's a, there's absolutely a monetary cost to getting your own 501(c)(3) status. And so here, we'll be an umbrella organization. We have the 501(c)(3), and we'll help you. I just, I don't disagree with that letter that you just read. However, like herding the cats, good luck trying to make a volunteer organization do something. And, you know, I don't think that this body, or you, or any other body can say to a volunteer-led organization, "You have to get 501(c)(3) status." It's incredibly expensive. It involves getting a lawyer and filing paperwork, and then filing your tax returns every year. So there's just a tipping point there. God bless every single one of them, because they're trying to do something good. They're trying to contribute. And so maybe, maybe we have to figure out how we can help them come into compliance. All right. Does anybody, yes, Ms. Flowers?
Sorry. Just one more clarifying question. So, Dr. Cushing, I know you just said passing the hat and handing out tickets. It sounds to me like this is pertaining to not just straight donations, but gambling and games of chance. So I want to clarify my understanding. It would not change activities like canning, for example, by students.
No, correct.
Sorry. Okay. So passing the hat to me just is getting donations. Students can still do that.
For me, passing the hat is, here's the hat, you throw in your 10 bucks, you get your run, your arms-length of fifty-fifty tickets, and, you know.
No, I hear that.
That's what I meant. I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. I think, I imagine it would be very difficult if it were that this, that a change that boosters or others were absorbing was you can't can, for example. That's not what we're talking about. So that feels easier in some way to me. So, thank you.
You can can. And you have to do the dance when you do that.
You can can.
All right. I'm looking around the table before I call a vote on whether we're going to accept this. Well, does anybody have any amendments that they'd like to make? All right. So there is a motion on the table to accept this policy as it is marked up on the screen. Correct, Ms. Coelho? We have that? We have a second already?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'm calling the vote. All those in favor? That passes five to zero. And we have work to do in our district. So, Dr. Cushing, the previous policy was tabled, the policy on crowdfunding, and so I have an action item to come, perhaps meet with you and Ms. Puglisi, to talk about that other policy, and whether we want to adopt it as a whole, or whether we would be better served folding it in with one of our other policies. So just, that's, you're now up to speed. All right. Our next policy, FFA memorials. So it is on the screen for everybody to read. Well, I see no edits. Again, if everybody's happy with this one, as is, one of our options is to vote as reviewed. We don't necess, in essence, it's like we update the date on the bottom. We say, yes, we've looked at this. If anybody wants any changes to it, I'm happy to entertain. Let's start with a motion to approve as is. Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Any amendments, thoughts, questions? Yes, Ms. Coelho?
You know, I don't like this one. And I will, I will vote no. You already know that. I truly feel that with this one, I feel that if a student, a teacher, somebody passes away within the school, I really feel that any type of permanent picture, memorial, or plaque should be made, the decision between the principal at the time and the parent. I think if the principal wants to put up a little plaque as a memorial for the student, or the parent wants to request that, it should be the school decision, and we shouldn't have anything to do with that. And that, that's how I personally feel.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Silva?
So does this include benches? I know it says within the schools, but it is on school property. And so even though it's not in the building, it's on the property? And we currently have many of these outside?
We do.
And in school parks?
And in school what?
Parks. I'm sorry, city parks, like Lynch Park benches and so forth.
So I don't, I don't get a say in what happens at Lynch Park, right?
No, no, but I'm just saying there's precedent for there being these types of memorials.
Right. So I will remind everybody, first thing, that there's a line in here that says, "If you had something going on before we adopted this policy, fine." And so I'm thinking of the benches that are outside the baseball field at Beverly High. So that's one thing. If we already have some of this going on, maybe it happened before the policy. And the second thing is, we always have the ability, as a committee, to vote to set a policy aside. So even if we adopt this policy, if something happens, and we say we want to, you know, we want to add a bench with somebody's name on it, we want to put somebody's picture on the wall, that request can come to us, and we can vote to set aside FFA and approve that particular memorial.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Cushing?
I do have a clarifying question, and from the first time I saw this, this has been my question. And maybe I'm parsing too much, but what is our actual definition of within the schools? Are we talking within the schools, meaning within the Beverly Public Schools, no matter where, and our property? Are we talking within the four walls of the school? Or are we talking the schools inclusive of the grounds? Because that's, in all honesty, I'm thinking trees, benches. We have a, we have a plaque honoring a Medal of Honor winner at Beverly High School that actually needs to be refinished, because it's starting to wear. So just looking at those things, that's my question, and just want clarity around, what do we exactly mean by within the schools?
Right. So what I would say to you from a institutional knowledge point of view is that really means within the walls of the different buildings that are designated as our schools. Because things that are outside are considered on the grounds. And so that is typically the language that we use. And then there's an extra little complication, because some of the grounds that we use are not school property. And some of the grounds that we use, and in particular, I'm thinking about the turf field at Beverly High, even though that is school grounds, that turf field is regulated by a whole different set of constraints, because we took grant money to help lay that turf down. And so in order to get the grant money, that field is considered city-owned and city-managed. And then, for instance, when we play football at, and I'm, Mr. Manzo, if I'm misstating, I hope that you'll chime in and help me with my institutional knowledge. At Hurd Stadium, that's not school grounds at all, never was, probably never will be. And yet we use it for some of our sports, right? So we have these kind of different categories, what I will call different categories, of places that, where we do our business of either, you know, extracurricular activities or educational activities. So the way I would read this policy would be very literal, within a building. And so within the, within the McEwen Building, there's a big memorial on the wall, right? The gentleman after whom the building is named. And that was put up before this policy was in place. Yes?
So you just raised a very important loophole in this, is that you can name things, libraries, buildings, fields.
We have a naming policy.
We have a naming policy, or you have a naming policy, that allows you to still honor people by naming things after them. It's not a memorial, it's, it's the name of the building, or it's the name of a library or an auditorium, and so on. And so that you can still do. So there's that loophole. There's a loophole you described, which is, at any point in time, the committee can say, "Well, we're not going to follow this policy," and you move on. But I think one of the things that we might be missing with this policy is that it very clearly tells you, it doesn't tell you that you can't remember people, you can't memorialize people. They're just telling you, there's a different way of doing it. And so those other two things we just talked about, you could do that. But for me, the creation of a scholarship or a permanent fund to memorialize someone is probably one of the best ways you can remember someone. And so anyone who goes to the senior awards, the scholarship nights at the high school every year, and you hear these stories about people that have a scholarship named after them. And it's really, it's really, for me, the best way to remember them. And so when Riley's mom gets up there and talks about, talks about her daughter, you know, you're sitting there crying, and it's a true sentiment, it's heartfelt, and for me, the student who gets that award gets that story. And there's a piece of Riley going with that student off to college. And so for me, it's not saying you can't remember people, it's just suggesting, here's a better way of doing it, or a different way of doing it. I shouldn't say better, a different way of doing it. It's by creating a scholarship. And in that way, that person's memory lives on through a generation, two generations, three generations of students down the road who received that scholarship. And so I don't have a problem with this policy, because I've seen it work. And so that's why I'm okay with voting in favor of just leaving it as is.
Dr. Silva?
I'd like to maybe consider an edit to make it clear, and perhaps just to say within school buildings.
Ms. Puglisi, do you have the ability to edit on your screen?
Yes, I do.
So hold on, don't do that yet. All right. So would you like, you'd like to make an amendment?
I'd like to make the amendment to edit the policy to say permanent memorials within school buildings should be limited in form, and the same language.
Does anyone have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Manzo?
So I think if you wanted to do that, that's fine, but I think you should then look through the rest of the policy manual to figure out whether Dr. Cushing's question has been answered somewhere else, as to what does it mean, right? What's, what's, within the schools? If within the schools is defined somewhere else in the policy manual?
Within school buildings.
No. What I'm saying is that there might be another policy in your manual, right, that tells you what within the schools means, the phrase that Dr. Cushing brought up.
I've actually searched for it after looking for this and have not found anything else related.
But, I mean, this is clear, right? It's, it means that you don't have to find out what the definition of within schools means.
Right. My point was that.
Consistency.
If there's, if there's a conflict somewhere else in the policy manual, you want to make sure you find it first before creating another issue. That's all. And if Dr. Cushing says it's not there.
Yeah.
Then it's not there. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? All right. There's a motion on the table. We're voting on the amendment to change it from within school, oh.
Permanent memorials within the schools to permanent memorials within school buildings.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment? Four. All those opposed, one. That gives us five. I don't have to call for if anybody's sustaining. The amendment passes. So now, is there any discussion on this policy before we take the vote to accept it as it is now on our screen? All right. I'm calling the vote. All those in favor of accepting FFA as amended? Five to zero. That passes. I appreciate this discussion, and it's, it's a tough one. And Ms. Coelho, I know it's tough for you, too. And so, again, I appreciate the fact that the bodies were willing to work through it, and the attention to detail in order to make our policies as clear as possible, and to not have inconsistencies across them. Ms. Puglisi, I believe the next item is our revenue report. Are you, are you gonna, all right. Well, you know, we always have this little rock, paper, scissors, shoot thing going on. Are you going to speak to it, or do you want me to? How would you?
I'm so busy, Vanna.
I believe your voice is hurting you. I'm sorry to keep making you speak.
No, that's okay. I don't have any additional meaningful changes that have come up in the last month that are worth highlighting at this time, except perhaps a little bit of foreshadowing. So our transportation revolving fund, we've talked about a few times, largely that we have already collected the bulk of the fees that we will collect for this year, the bulk of our fees into this fund come via student-paid transportation fees. And we are a little bit short of where we anticipate to be. That is not alarming, as we do have a sufficient enough carryforward balance in this fund to cover that delta. However... However, later in our agenda, I am going to ask the committee to entertain reviewing our transportation detail fees and fee structure, and that is when we rent out our buses to other groups. It is largely our field trips, other student groups, but sometimes it's community groups, and sometimes it's private groups. And so, we do not make money on them presently. In fact, presently, we lose a little money on them, because we haven't updated those fees in a little while, which is why they're in front of us. And while we are not looking to make money on the backs of our students and our community members, but rather to make it sufficient to operate it, but also, similar to our building revolving fund, to collect a nominal amount of money beyond that, to cover general wear and tear that might occur through rentals. And so, that would also go into the line that could potentially influence this as we carry it throughout the year.
All right. I'm looking around the room. Does anybody have any questions about our revenues? Okay. Our next item on our agenda are our expenses, and what I will save your voice from saying, Ms. Puglisi. Are you at all concerned with any of these expenses that we're running too far ahead, or are you happy that we are quote-unquote "on track"? Are there any accounts, any line items that have your concern?
The only ones that I'm keeping a very close eye on at this point in time is our utility accounts. And by request of this body, further in my presentation, I have a little bit of information about our utility usage relative to our electric accounts. And so, that is really the one that is catching my eye. I am not alarmingly concerned at this time, but it is something that I have my eyes towards.
I am looking around the room. Does anybody have any questions on the expenses? Yes, Mr. Copeland?
So, with the, talking about the utility accounts, with, again, the, now, we have credits that come to us, correct, from solar and everything else that we have in place. And we have a company that's working with us on that. Is that helping to meet any of the needs that we're facing with utility, or...
So, the way that the solar credits work, the majority of the ones that are available to the school department, because basically, what has happened is, as the city as a whole has expanded their solar footprint, and have entered into additional agreements, the schools were one of, I believe, one of the first adopters, so were undercover, some of the older agreements are the ones where the credits come onto our utility accounts. Really, the way that works is that it's mostly, we get a coupon. So, it is not similar to how it works in people's individual homes, and I'm going to get this one wrong, but it's either in front of or behind the meter, is, it's one of them. The preferred one, the one that people are more familiar with in a residential setting, the one that people are like, this, you know, it makes my electric bill zero, it's a net zero, it's a wash, is not the one that we participate in. And so, I'm going to, I apologize for not knowing which side of the meter that's on, but I think it's behind the meter, because it's on your house. But rather, we mostly buy our, we have the opportunity, as a result of our solar, to buy electricity at a discounted rate. And really, we're paying like 90 cents on the dollar. So, it is not as substantial a discount as you might see, again, if it was behind the meter.
And I'm going to chime in here and say that the main reason for that is because all of the solar panels were installed with a $0 outlay. It's a choice. You can buy the equipment yourself, and then get a direct benefit from it, or you can let somebody else install the equipment, and then they own what gets collected, and you buy from them at a discounted rate. And so, our city has traditionally gone that $0 outlay route. We don't own any of the equipment. It's like, if you were a homeowner, you're leasing your roof to somebody who owns the equipment, and then you, your return on that lease, your ROI, is that you get to buy what, you get to buy your electricity at a discounted rate. And so, it's literally, do you have enough money to outlay to buy all the equipment? And then you get the maximum value, but you had to lay out a whole bunch of money to start with, right? And then it takes a number of years for you to recoup your investment. It's a trade-off, and our city has chosen, time and again, to let somebody else incur those upfront costs, and then we buy it at discount. Yes, Dr. Silva, did I see your hand?
Yes, but I think it's just really a comment to say that. It's not really an efficient way to do it, because, you know, I don't think you ever recoup the money, because you're paying in tax credits, or you're paying in the credits that you accumulate. And it's never, it never, I don't think it ever balances. It would be great to actually see those numbers, to have the city let us know when and if you actually benefit from it financially, because I see line items in the school budget for electricity going up, for electric costs. And you'd think that, with this arrangement, that we would at least see it level, and not increase, or at least, or, you know, better yet, have it decrease, so that, you know, we can see a savings in that line item. And I haven't, I've yet to see a presentation that lays out exactly how that, you know, that happens, and how the school benefits from it.
I think that is a fair statement. I, too, would like to see that. And it's, this is not an excuse, this is a statement of fact. It's complicated, in the sense that we, everything from the solar field at Beverly High, to the canopies, right, the hillside, to the canopies, any given other rooftop, we put that out to bid as a city. It's not a simple one-to-one, that because there's a canopy here, that this school is behind the grid, and gets to use the electricity off of this parking canopy. So, I have made that request. I believe that we need somebody from the city to come in and give us that kind of a presentation. We are at a disadvantage, based on the fact that we don't have somebody sitting in a seat at the city level, who would probably be best to give us that presentation. That person, I think, would have been Arena, and she's no longer employed with the City of Beverly. So, she took another job. That's not an excuse, it is, again, a statement of fact. We can make that request again, and it's fantastic that we have a city councilor here to hear that happening. Those, the people who would make that presentation actually report up to the mayor, and so, I'm happy to ask the mayor to make somebody available to make that presentation, and then come give it to us. I do think it would be useful for everybody to know a little bit more about that. And the flip side to the story, if we weren't doing this, how much more would our bills be?
Well, I mean, that comes in the presentation. And I think, you know, even though it may be, I don't think it's as complicated that, as we're led to believe, because those sites generate a certain amount of kilowatts, or power. You can convert that annual rate, or even at a monthly rate, to dollar, to dollar amounts, and add that up. Take what the city spent in electricity over that period, and do the math, and at least figure out, you know, those sites have the capacity to generate this, we're only getting this. And so, you can do a cost-benefit analysis, in terms of, in the future, perhaps, maybe we should have different policy, or lease it at a different rate, to recover some of the costs that we decided to provide to the vendor. So, I mean, I think there's a better way to sort of go through the numbers, to determine how those should be structured in the future. And maybe, I don't know how long they're locked in, if it's a 50-year lease, or, I have no idea. But maybe there's a period, maybe there's a time where they can be renegotiated to pull back or clawback some of that, the dollar value.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, I was going to say, similar, like, again, until we know, we don't know what the contract's, how they're structured. And it's not just, okay, we just do it this way, or we don't do it at all. It could be, do we need to do it a different way that's more effective and more impactful, where the city can reap more rewards, especially going forward, facing the future deficits that's forecasted? We need to be looking into these different avenues, to see if there's other opportunities to recoup potential funds, cut back on costs, maybe even a revenue stream. But I think, from the information that we have currently, we just don't have enough data to see, is the way that we're doing it the most effective way, that it can be done.
Right. And I would say, I think that it's, it's, the part of the complication is that it's not up to us. We, as a school committee, some number of years ago, voted to let our rooftops be included in the RFP that the city sent out. So, for instance, this body, or the committee of the whole, does not have direct control over the solar canopy that's in this parking lot. It's that, it is that simple. We kind of, quote-unquote, I don't want to say we gave that away, we allowed that asset to be included in a bigger set of assets, some of which are not school properties, but are city properties, and the RFP covers all of them. And so, asking, how long is the contract, is a fantastic question, because as long as we're under contract, we can't, we can't have any opportunity to possibly take another path. So, I took the action item. I will absolutely ask the mayor, and ask Mr. Bryant, if we can have that kind of presentation, a presentation in general about energy, where are our credits? And so that everybody knows, there is, just like there's a solid waste committee of people who are really skilled in waste reduction, there is an energy advisory committee. There are people who know far more than I do about clean energy, who are advising the city council and the mayor on all things energy. And so, maybe, in fact, it'll be somebody from that, that will volunteer, that, how would I classify that? They're volunteers as well, right?
Yeah. It's like all the city boards and commissions, so they're appointees to the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, but tend to be specialists in that.
So, maybe that's who will come and give us our presentation. All right. Any other comments on this particular, on our expense report?
At this point, no, unless anybody had any specific questions. And if you don't have them now, as always, you're welcome to email them to me, and I'm happy to get back to you as well.
All right. So, let's go to the next item on the agenda, and this might, based on how long it takes, this, we might not get through, we might not get through the rest of our items, but we'll try. So, the next item is, Emma has already alluded to it, transportation rentals and the fee structure. Do you want to speak? Now I have the bad voice. Excuse me.
Yes. I apologize for sharing my raspy voice with you. So, we talked about this briefly before I alluded to it. So, our transportation rentals slash details, depending on who you talk to, what we call them, is basically fee-for-service transportation, other than to-from school, for classes, student groups, community groups, and private groups. So, in last year, there was approximately 153 trips that were processed through private detail. Notably, it does not include athletics. Athletics is a line item through the athletic budget. And so, outside of field trips, it has included transportation for the Kevin O'Grady School to the YMCA occasionally, transportation for the Mayor's Summer Literacy Program, Beverly Rec Department summer transportation, transportation for our student groups, and then other, you know, sort of one-off things here and there. It has been a bit since we last visited our fee structure. The way our fee structure is currently set up, it is a flat fee, depending on where your destination is located. The, my understanding for the original thought behind this fee is that it was based on a four-hour trip. The transportation contract that we have with our bargaining unit that includes our bus drivers and van drivers, breaks out shift minimums for a number of things, including field trips, what they call pick-and-drops, so pickups and drop-offs, other transportation items, most of which have a four-hour minimum. What we have sort of seen as the unintended consequence of this is that people say, this is what the price is, they expect that this is what the price is. Should their trip run longer than four hours, they will send in a check for that much money in advance of their invoice, and then it's a back-and-forth, and it is more administrative work than it ought to be, and really needs to be. And so, instead, I am suggesting that we move to a fee structure that's determined based on duration and length of trip. So, basically, including in those shift minimums, the cost for the drivers, based on what the contractual rate is, a mileage fee to cover things like fuel, tolls if applicable, and then, again, that general wear and tear on the vehicle, and then an administration fee that would cover payroll taxes, as well as some of the administrative time that goes into coordinating all of this. And so, I see some of the benefits, is it ensures that the district is recouping all related costs, it keeps fees in line with usage. So, if you are a field trip, and field trips have a two-hour minimum per hour contract, and your field trip is actually only two hours, because you're just taking kids, you know, to Poetry on the Hill, and you're coming back, and it's not that long, you don't have to pay for four hours. So, there could be a benefit there, and includes minimal overhead charges. One perceived drawback could be that we will have to review the fee annually, to keep it in line with our CBAs. Again, the reason that I'm not recommending, you know, building in a factor to allow for some buffer room is, again, the primary user of our transportation details are student groups, there are field trips, there are community groups, and we're not necessarily trying to make an unnecessary buck on the backs of those groups of individuals.
So, your request to this, Bonnie? So, your request to this, Bonnie, sorry, Mr. Kim, is that we vote whether to accept this change in the fee structure of how we rent out, quote-unquote, rent out, our buses and our bus service for extra, everything extracurricular.
Yes.
However, you made a statement that this does not cover athletics. And I guess I want to say, I think that it should, in the sense that if it costs more money to do a run, it costs more money to do a run, whether you're taking a child to Poetry on the Hill, or to a sporting event. And if those costs then would be accurately and appropriately higher, and attributed to athletics, as opposed to a loss of revenue in the transportation line item. So, right now, I feel like, for me, I want it to be accurately reflected in the athletics budget, because only then can we talk about, what are our athletic fees, and are we accurately tracking, and are we charging there appropriately?
Yes. And so, the way that we currently charge athletic transportation is that bus driver time is coded to that line, but there is no, then, allocation for tolls, or fuel, or administrative costs. And similarly, the, like, the payroll tax portion of that folds into our overall payroll tax line, as opposed to broken out to be separate.
So, we're only charging athletics for bus driver time?
Correct.
Not for this kind of thing?
Correct. So, really, the only place that it would be different is sort of in that mileage fee and that administrative fee.
That's maybe a conversation for another day. All right, team. I'm looking for a motion to accept the new fee structure for bus, for transportation rentals. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Coelho. Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Yes, Mr. Dr. Silva.
Could I ask?
Sorry.
That's okay.
First time I booted up tonight.
Could I ask, did I see the previous fee was $100 for a four-hour trip?
Depending on where it was going. So, in town for Beverly, it was $100. If you were going to Salem, however, it was $180. If you were going to Peabody, it's $180.
If we're going to Salem in October, was it like, five times as much?
I don't think there was hazard pay.
So, this new proposal would- So this new proposal would improve the reimbursement?
So.
In terms of, you know, the wear and tear cost and actual use cost for the bus?
Yes, and it will hopefully allow us to bill more in line with actual usage, again, potentially saving groups money who are using it for less than four hours, and seemingly, and additionally, giving us the opportunity through some other oversight to then make sure that if your intended trip is in fact eight hours, that you are paying for eight hours of driver time, and so we are not inadvertently taking a loss.
That's good. All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Copeland.
And do we have any idea what the pricing difference would be, say, if it was a trip, you know, to Salem, you know, within, for two hours, in comparison to what it currently is?
So, I was doing four hours to four hours when I was doing it, because I wanted to make sure that it was not going to be a substantial change for folks, and it's right on there. It's a little bit higher, again, because our salaries have increased year over year, and we haven't revisited this for a couple of years, but that, it was pretty nominal. In fact, at first I was like, wait a second, am I, am I doing this right? Is this right? Because there were a few instances, again, like if someone was going into Boston where it's not that far away, however, someone had decided that perhaps there was, it was more burden some to drive into Boston, and so it should cost a little bit more, and I don't disagree with that, however, there is no differential that we pay to our employees. And so, it costs the same to the district, plus or minus some tolls.
And so really then, using that logic, somebody who's only going two hours is going to get a better deal?
Correct.
Because they were paying a four-hour minimum.
Correct.
But that won't hurt us.
That, I don't believe it will.
Because before, we were billing out at just four hours, correct?
For the most part, that is how it was working out. And so again, we had, we did see losses last year in the 15,000 to 20,000 range in our details, and so this is an attempt to correct that.
All right, yeah, I just want to make sure that it won't backfire on us, and that it actually do what we're looking for it to do.
Absolutely.
It won't hurt the groups.
Yeah, it won't hurt the groups.
You don't have to be apologetic to run it at cost, meaning, you know, wear and tear, and, you know, the general maintenance for the vehicle should be built into.
Right, yeah.
All right, so there's a motion on the table. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? That passes five to zero. Ms. Puglisi, I wish to give you your choice of whether, in the last two minutes, you want to do item six and push seven to the next meeting, or do item seven and push six to the next meeting, especially given that we already have an action item to try to get somebody from our energy department to come give us a presentation.
I would like to push item number six and very quickly touch on number seven.
All right, I'm looking around the room. My committee, are you all right with that?
All right.
All right, preview. Mostly, I just wanted to bring forward a number of the members of this committee, also are participating in our financial forecasting process that's happening citywide at this time. And really, I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight, not necessarily for this group, but for anybody who might be tuning in for BEV CAM, just to sort of highlight what the difference between financial forecasting and budgeting is. We talk about financial forecasting as being sort of the kickoff to our citywide budget process, and yet, the two, while both very important and related to each other, they are not the same thing, and I just want to make sure that that was clear. Really, for financial forecasting, we are looking at high-level historic trends for key budget drivers, and assume sort of a carry-forward staffing model and budget offsets, as opposed to, as we walk through the budget process, we will dive even more deeper into each line, and we're really looking at projected actuals rather than projections related to historic trends. And so there's a couple of pieces where that will be, you know, that, to me, are pretty significant. So one of those things is our staffing costs. So when I go through the, you know, to come up with my numbers for financial forecasting, I do go through for all of our individuals and step them as appropriate, give a, you know, a relative assumption for lane changes for our Unit A folks. And in years where we don't have bargained agreements, I assume a COLA of 3%. However, what this does not capture is if there needs to be substantial staffing changes, if we have a large class graduate or come in, if we decide we're going to offer, you know, scuba diving, and we need to build a pool and hire a whole bunch of scuba diving instructors, if there is substantial changes to other curriculum, that is not factored into this. So this is really a carry-forward assumption. Similarly, health insurance, I assume sort of on-par participation, and I assume a 6% increase each year. 6% a few years ago was probably really high. Now 6% sounds like a dream. And so this is really, again, it is a placeholder as we walk through budgeting. Sometime in sort of the early spring, we will get the number from the city as they work through with their consultant to tell us what our actual number is. And so, fingers crossed I'm right, but I bet you I'm not. So that is a piece here. Similarly, with our out-of-district tuitions, the Operational Service Division, which is, no, OSD is, sets the tuition rates for private special education programs, however, that's not the only thing that influence our out-of-district tuition costs. Private collaborative programs get to set their own rates, private schools do have an option to submit for something called program reconstruction, which can substantially change their price. Similarly, forecasting does not take into account any new or substantially different placements for students placed out of district. So when we go through the budgeting process, Bethany goes through a very robust process where, you know, she makes a much better guess than my assumed four and a half percent, which again is based on sort of historic actuals, while, and so we will see, you know, there is potential for fluctuation in that line. And I highlight these because these things combined make up the vast majority of our budget, and so again, even a very well-intended, historically-based forecast does leave the opportunity for there to be fluctuation when we move into the actual budget process.
Go back one slide, please. So I'll just, I'll just remind people that there was a year that our OSD increase was 14%, and we have no control over that. And so, again, we, we build a projection based on these historical trends, and every once in a while, there's a, there's a spike. And so, I just point that out, because we have no control over that.
I think it's also worth pointing out that, in the last two years, looking at the increase in health insurance, 6% is actually low.
Yes.
And I would recommend that you probably think of like an eight or nine percent number.
Were we at 10 last year?
We were at 10 last year, yes.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
And then the last, it was just a reminder that financial forecast meetings are coming up. These are the anticipated agendas, should you be interested. The December 2nd one is likely to be a bit more interesting than the December 9th one, so if you can only make one, that would be my recommendation. You'll get to hear a whole bunch from me and from City Finance Director Bryant Ailes as we talk about the assumptions in far greater detail than this about our expenditures. And these meetings are held in city council chambers, as well as streamed by our good friends at BEV CAM. So if you can tune in, if you're interested to tune in, I would recommend that you do.
So we're already running a little over, but I'm looking around the room. Does anybody have any burning financial forecasting questions for Ms. Emma? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved to.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho, thank you, Mr. Manzo. All those in favor? Non-debatable, it passes five to zero, it's 7:35. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, November 19, 2025, and we are using a hybrid and remote meeting option because our legislator and representative, sorry, and our senator are in transit from the State House as we speak, and they are our guests online at the moment, and we hope to see one or both in person. This is a Beverly School Committee, Committee of the Whole. Today is Wednesday. We appreciate the support of BevCam, who is live streaming our meeting, as well as recording it and making it available to the public. We have one member who is joining us remotely this evening, Dr. Kenan McKenzie DeFranza, is remote, and so I'm just going to read a statement very quickly as we get started, and then take the roll. Beginning on June 16, 2021, with the Chapter 20 of Acts of 2021, which were twice extended and now further extended until March 31, and then again extended, government boards are granted provisions to, among other things, hold meetings remotely by suspending the need for the quorum and chair to physically be present. It does ask our body to use technological methods to allow safe public real-time access. As a note, Beverly also has prior approval for remote participation of members when this act eventually expires, and if it does. In those cases, the chair and quorum do physically need to be present, and we are meeting that criteria tonight with a quorum present, as well as the chair. Tonight is a Committee of the Whole meeting, which means we do not have an opportunity for members of the public to address the body. The next opportunity to address the body will be at our regular school committee meeting on December 10. And if you need to make accommodations to provide a link to join that meeting, you can send an advance request to residentvoice@beverlyschools.org. You can also use that email address, residentvoice@beverlyschools.org, to sign up in advance, or we will have a signup sheet at the table on that December 10 meeting. Please remember, it is an opportunity to address the body. Limit your remarks to three minutes. You will need to provide your name and real address for the record, and the body will not reply. Often, we refer the matter to the superintendent. Today, we have members of the school committee, various members of the district administration and leadership teams, and I will conduct a full roll call so that we know who is present. Online, we are joined by a school committee member, Dr. Kenan McKenzie DeFranza. Do you want to confirm you can hear and see us?
I can, thank you. And I'm sorry to miss, I'm keeping my phone to myself.
Oh.
Yes, I can see in here.
Okay, we appreciate that, and hope that you feel better soon. We are also joined by school committee Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Mayor Michael Cahill.
Here.
The school committee representative, Laryn Diviznik.
Here.
School committee representative, Kim Quelo.
Here.
I am school committee representative, Rachel Abel, and absent this evening is Karen Robinson, our school committee representative from Ward 5. Okay, we're also joined by Dr. Peter Cushing.
Here.
Ms. Erin Brown.
Here.
Ms. Bethany Splansky.
Here.
Ms. Emma Plegleisi.
Here.
A whole gaggle of principals. Oh, gosh, we have Julie Smith, Gabrielle Monteverchi, Amy Blanchard, Greg Twombly, a whole host of people. I'm sure I'll keep better attendance later. Okay. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm neglecting to acknowledge our two other honored guests that are online with us, Senator Joan Lovely and House Representative Hannah Bowen. Hopefully, they both can hear and see us. Maybe give us an indication.
Yes.
Thank you.
You and you, as of course, joining more shortly.
Okay. Okay. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think, Ms. Brown, it's your turn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm going to add my video to the screen, just to make it a little bit more friendly. This evening, our agenda item is to have two topics with our elected leaders at the State House. If we don't mind, starting with the budget conversation, we anticipate Ms. Bowen will possibly be here to do the citation in person, and we'd appreciate that. So, I think that we had a few questions, and Senator Lovely, not to put you completely on the spot, but the questions relate to Chapter 70 funding, our Student Opportunity Act, the Fair Share Amendment, and Circuit Breaker. The questions that were submitted, will there be a movement on Chapter 70 and increasing aid for students in Beverly? Will there be changes to Circuit Breaker? Are there going to be more supports to a district with transportation costs associated with special education placements? And lots of question about the dismantling of the Department of Ed. In our previous meeting this evening, our Director of Finance did share some news about some realignment of the Education Department. So, welcome to our meeting. We appreciate you making the time to be with us, and I know these are challenging questions. Perhaps you want to give us some information.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm in the Senate Reading Room, which is just off of the Senate Chamber. The Senate is still in formal session. If I have to leave, it's because I'm apt to go into the chamber for a roll call vote. We're in the middle of five roll call votes. And I see that Representative Bowen is on the train, as the House just adjourned, I think probably in the last half an hour, so she's on her way back to Beverly. Okay, so, let me just start from where we are in the budget process. So, we're in, we're mid-year in our FY26 budget, just hitting.
Can't hear you.
And, so, we're not into the FY27 budget yet. However, it is actively being considered by the administration, so the governor and her office actually, according to their budgets, have presented by the third week in January. So, they're working very hard. Can you hear me okay?
No, you just went very quiet. I don't know if there's a microphone you can get closer to.
Um, you know what, let me see if I can turn it up. It's just, I'm in public space, so.
That's better.
Okay, good. Okay. So, the, as I was saying, the governor, her, on the administration, is currently putting their FY27 budget together. The FY26 budget is what it is. You know, we have, we passed that budget, actually, on June 30, in time for the beginning of the fiscal year on July 1. So, that budget is set. That was a $61 billion budget, and actually, we did cut $1 billion from that budget before we passed, because we already saw some stress to the budget. So, the House has said it, cut $1 billion from it, so it was $62 billion. We cut it to $61 billion, and then passed it on time. So, that budget now exists, and all the Chapter 70, Circuit Breaker, Transportation, all those funds have been expended through that budget process. So, really, what we can talk about is the FY27 budget, which, again, the administration is putting their budget together, that will be called House Two, because it'll be in our second year, and we will, we will see that budget the third week in January. What's very important that I want to mention is that on December 16, I believe, is our revenue projection meeting, and that will be with the Joint Committee on Ways and Means, so that's both House and Senate, and we will have all of our budget analysts and experts come in and advise the legislature on what those revenue projections are going forward under the current fiscal situation, which was, as we know, we are losing just north of $3 billion per year. That will be coming right off of our Medicaid, and our Medicaid is about $22 billion a year. It's just under half of the state budget. And I do have the Beverly numbers. I think Beverly residents, it's just under 20% of Beverly receives some type of Medicaid support. And so, that'll be, that'll be a 3B, and I have a Senate roll call, but let me just quickly finish, and then you can go on to Representative Bowen. There's, so that'll be 3 billion, and then we're losing another about $664 million in direct tax revenue, revenues, because of federal, federal cuts in the, in the, in the 3B bill that was passed on July 4. That also has tax revenue cuts. So, we're losing some very significant revenue. I just, just want to mention that, because it's pretty significant. That, I'm not saying that the sky is falling, it's just that those revenues will have to be made up in some form or fashion. I'm going to stop there. I'm just going to put my, I'm going to mute and take my camera off, and I'll be back momentarily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And can you hear me all right if I hop in?
Yes, we can, Ms. Bowen.
Too much background noise. I currently stopped. I may drop off if we get moving again. We'll try to tag to the update. So, yeah, I mean, I think the picture, the governor of the.
I'm fully ready for the inbound train to come by us here. Obviously, inbound train is bound, we're on our way for Salem. Thank you.
The overall picture is as dark at the state level as it is at every city and town level, so I think it's going to take a lot of creative thinking, but as you can see from this year's budget process, there is really a commitment to keep funding our education commitment as fully as, as we can, and to make everything, everything possible to try and make up what we can, while acknowledging that we're at a lot of different sectors. So, you know, being able to more fully fund expectations of the Student Opportunity Act, the positive discussions about what the Special Education and Circuit Breaker looks like, both in terms of trying to meet the goals that had been set by now, and starting to overcome open conversations about what that could look like going forward. So, there are proposals floating around in this session about setting up commissions or studies, ways to look at what that should be going forward. I think out of recognition, what we've been hearing from all you and from leaders across the state that, that's needed, same with thinking about transportation. There is already a effort underway to have the Office of the Inspector General review options for lowering transportation costs. So, that commitment that came out of the fiscal year '25 supplemental budget in June. So, overlapping budget years give the opportunity to throw in some of those policy pieces that are by timing, and that's one that we should get a report early this year, February, with any recommendation for ways of, for the state to find efficiency in transportation. We'll see what that looks like and how that affects other funds. The other piece that I know a lot of you have been following and will continue following is the listening sessions going on right now. First, a listening session last night. There's one more person that really is an opportunity for communities to talk about how the Chapter 70 funding formula is working for districts, and really how the local contribution, being effectively with the way it is, serves communities, and what changes people would like to see. So, that's in the kind of study phase. That's another piece that was written in, actually, this month of the fiscal year '26, as it's a half DECEP Department of Revenue, to study that and to make recommendations. So, I, for me, that, those are signals that these things are being taken seriously, these challenges that communities are facing, and that there is a deliberate effort to gather as much information and perspectives as possible to be able to, you know, make informed decisions as the budget situation is right. And I know for the main things, I think that I wanted to, there's also some, the policy pieces we could talk about on the budget side, because of the specific discuss, so those questions can come up.
Ms. Bowen, you mentioned the listening sessions for Chapter 70. I think there was a virtual option last night, actually, I know there was, I was a participant, but are there any indications that the report from this commission will affect our FY27? Do you have any indications that there would be sort of immediate action taken based on the sessions? I mean, it, it was pretty harsh last night. So many communities are having to rethink their fee structures for students, cut programs, athletics put back in place, kindergarten fees. Wasn't sure if, if legislators and, and our senators are listening in on those sessions and understanding the, the real problem with the Chapter 70 shortfalls.
Yeah, I, I think so. And there, the last one is December 3, and you can tell it's not too, too far. If anyone wants to go in person, so there's a more opportunity. But, but yeah, I would say people are listening and are hearing the message loud and clear, but I don't know that that will lead to a report with enough concrete recommendations to have everybody on the same page for this next budget cycle. But that's not to say that action in some other form will necessarily take forever, but it just, I think that the timeline, like that, the part that the listening sessions will be done by the end of December, the report isn't expected until, I think, the end of the fiscal year. What folks are learning will be, you know, everyone's hearing the same pressures, so that will certainly happen times of the 3077 depression happen, but in terms of concrete recommendations from that study, I'd say.
Senator Lovely, it looks like you rejoined us. I don't know if you wanted to pick up on Chapter 70, or any, was there other thoughts on the FY27 pressures?
Well, we're hearing from, from our school committees, from our communities, from our educators, from our, our families about the pressures. You know, even though we have made some significant Chapter 70 additional funding of 400, I've got it here, it's north of 400 million that we additionally put into Chapter 70 funding for this, for the FY26 budget cycle. Also, our Fair Share Amendment dollars that came in higher than projected for the first year that Fair Share passed, brought in $1 billion. For the second year, it was north of $2 billion. And we also added additional supplemental Fair Share dollars as well. To the education side of the equation, is that split between Transportation and Education. So, we have some dollars flowing in, but it still isn't enough, and we understand that. So, this is why this meeting is really very important, to hear from you as we are now going into the next budget cycle, and what will that look like. Representative Bowen is right, that the listening sessions, these are really important. I was in last night just to hear Senator Lewis speak, Chair Lewis, who's the Chair of the Education, Joint Committee on Education on the Senate side. He's working very hard. In fact, he had sponsored that amendment on the Senate side to create this commission, because even though we went through a full commission just, just a few short years ago, we're, we're still, here we are, back at it, because it's still, it doesn't, it just doesn't work across the system. It doesn't work evenly for, for every community, and so we need to adjust it. And so, listening to communities through this listening session, we will not see that report. It's not due until June of '26, so the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, and we'll do this, to get it done, you know, to, to get that commission, to get it to us sooner, but its due date is June of '26. But this listening session is very critical, so we're, you know, that's information that we need to hear from our communities. We just don't know yet. I think that the December 15 consensus revenue hearing will really give us a little better of a snapshot to understand what the revenues that will be coming in, and then how we essentially divide those up among, among the priorities, of which education is a top priority. That and Mass Health, I would say the two top priorities across, across the Commonwealth. And so, it's, it's not like you're, it's a one and two, it's a, it's a one and one. And how are we going to properly fund it to be able to make sure you have the tools and your toolbox to be able to educate our kids? I wish I had more information, but again, I think this is a really great pre-meeting going into these, into the next year's budget. And, you know, usually, again, we don't usually meet with you until sometime in the spring. I think having this, this discussion now, roll call, thank you. Having this discussion now, and then having this discussion in, again, after the first of the year, I think would be great, and then we can have another one before your budget. I'll be back.
Okay, thank you for joining. Representative Bowen, you alluded to some policy work that you might feel, you know, would support some of the budget conversation. Is that something that you wanted to share now, or?
Sure. And it's, it's sort of tangentially related to the budget, but I think important to flag other things that are in the works, and I know there's always strong feedback from the legislature to assess how, if that, if anything, if curriculum changes or policies that will cause without having a mechanism for covering those costs. So, a couple of things that have happened already on the House side that have come up are a move to include financial literacy courses in preschool, and so that is a, it's a, it's a, it's a making a floor and have the House, that, that would, would include getting more of sort of useful curriculum material by having a requirement, a therapy course for covering basic financial, like, build for preschool. So, that's one to just, I don't know, if they get back on, so, anything. And then, the other, I hope that's really, so, they can keep everyone clear on that. So, I think you said, or I can share, on how that would impact Beverly, that our literacy curriculum in that early grade, so, 33rd grade, is strong, and these were standards that, you know, that we need to have all, and, and also that there's grants available for new kids in that area. So, those are exciting things that are happening. You know, on the Senate side, they've taken up the cell phone ban, haven't yet taken that up on the House side. But I think for all of you, it's really just a little to flag, it's, it's a first thing to hear from you, if there were financial impacts that come to affect you, and if there are examples already in Beverly of what's working, that other states in America, or if there are areas that, that actually impacted us, really, and are positively impacted. So, those are just a few that are kind of in circulation right now, that shouldn't have such a very impact on the forefront of your first meeting.
And it sounds like you're inviting members of the public, members of this body, to send you feedback on those. I think a little later in the program, we'll hear about another House bill proposal, and I think there are probably plenty of opportunities for advocacy in our community. Thank you for sharing those two bills. Senator Lovely, thank you for rejoining us. Hannah, I don't know, are you close to your stop? Don't miss your stop. Okay. So, Senator Lovely, we had asked Ms. Bowen while you were away about any of the pending legislation that might be of interest to this body, to this community. I don't know if you wanted to add on some of the items that you're either co-sponsoring or working with.
Yes. So, Representative Bowen mentioned the, the cell phone ban in schools, which I believe Beverly already does. So, and we really do think that that will really assist in the education and less distractions for, for our kids. So, you already have that implemented and underway. So, So congratulations on that. We also just did, also passed a bill on book banning or book banning. And so we did that bill, which is on the House as well, so that we're not having books banned against, especially those that are described as politically motivated book bans. We want students to be able to have access to the books that, under the curriculum that the school system decides that they want to read. So we also passed that as well. There's a few other bills out there, but, you know, again, increasing revenue for, you know, for transportation, for example. Certainly, we see that circuit breaker, even though we fully funded it at 75%, that's still, is still a big chunk for the school systems to be able to, to be able to cover for that 25% that you're covering. And so, again, this study, you know, with the Department of Education and the Department of Revenue, together with the legislature, will really start to help peel back where those revenues will be available. I do want to, you know, just some good news. And I know I keep going back to the revenue side. It's when I used to sit on Ways and Means. But, you know, looking at our, we look very closely at our month-to-month revenue collections. And so far, they're running, you know, above projection, above projection. So that's good. It shows that we still have a, you know, healthy economy where even though we're watching every penny, we're still seeing our tax revenues come in. Now, they will be impacted again by that $684 million that's, cuts that are through our tax revenue. But we're looking at, you know, how to, again, neutralize that to the best ability that we can. So, but we're still looking at, you know, projections, tax revenue projections coming in. Again, those are month-to-month, we examine them very closely. And that, we'll get that date to you for anyone who might be interested in watching that, that revenue projection meeting with our analysts and our economists. It's really quite interesting for those people that like that. But it really is very interesting. It's pretty deep and it's online. You don't have to come into the State House and you really, unless you want that in-person experience, but you can watch it from wherever you might be. And it's pretty eye-opening. So we'll let you know when that is. But that's where we're at at this point. And again, you know, we thank you for, you know, for just keeping us apprised of what's going on in Beverly. The Beverly School Committee has always done a great job at that, and we're really, really grateful.
Thank you. I'm just looking around the table. Were there any members that had a specific question? I think Ms. Visnick wants to ask.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us. My question has to do with the breakdown of the fair share amendment funds, AKA the millionaire's tax. And I saw a report recently, and I don't remember the percentages, but relatively speaking, a small amount had been allocated to education and a much larger amount had been allocated to transportation. So I'll start with maybe that's not true. I have a lot of things that I've been reading lately. So even whether that's true or not, my question has to do with when, are there plans, and if so, when, for the millionaire's tax to be directed to K-12 education? So rather than, for instance, rather than editing the formula of Chapter 70, if Chapter 70 just had a lot more money in it, then everybody using the same formula would get more money. Same thing with the Student Opportunity Act. You wouldn't, you could just move like the line up and then more communities would qualify to get Student Opportunity Act money if the pool had more money in it. So are we planning, are we as a state, planning to take the millionaire's tax and put it into either of those funds specifically for K-12 as opposed to early education or college education?
How can, you want me to start? Happy to do that. There hasn't been any discussion about moving towards that effort. If you remember, fair share went to the ballot. And so when it went to the ballot specifically to find, fund all education from K-12 through college and then on the transportation piece. And you're right, sometimes it's 50/50. We're only into year two, going into year three. I think the first year was heavier on education than transportation, and then it kind of goes back and forth. We're still new at it on how to divide it up. There would, I would think that there would have to be another effort to take a look at whether to narrow it to K-12 education. And I will tell you, we hear from higher ed too, a lot, who also say that they're needing more funding as well. So, but the, you know, the way it was written, the way it was passed, the way it went to the ballot was all education. So it wouldn't be, you know, I don't know what the process would be to do that or the support for it, but it would be a process.
Yeah, I would add, I think there is definitely focus on making sure that additional funding, right? Like that was the, the effort around the millionaire's tax, but I've added to not represent one, but you've got still a priority. And then just, you know, there are ongoing conversations with us, how we tackle some of the things that make local government work expensive, that healthcare, first of all, the students' values. So there's so many different angles that, and that should try at the state level to make changes that get more money to the kinds of programming to help students thrive in our schools and that comes from, or you can, or we can, like, health care, and we're finding that money too. Those conversations are there. Yes, like, yeah, I don't know if there's a plan or exactly how it's going to look, especially next year.
Okay. Mayor Cahill has his hand up. Mayor Cahill.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a great conversation. Thank you both. And I want to just take off from what Ms. Visnick said. You know, there are a lot of really important reasons to fund education and a lot of really important reasons to fund transportation. And the fair share money is supposed to be roughly 50/50 each year. One reason that is overarching for funding both more, I think we're all looking for more for both, is that the economic competitiveness of our region is really wrapped up in, you know, in making great strides in both areas. So, you know, that's, and if Representative Bowen was on an electric train coming from Boston, if the investments had yet been made to modernize our commuter rail into a true regional rail, she'd have been home 20 minutes ago. And maybe she'd be here and we'd be doing the presentation. But, you know, so there's such a great need, is really the point. And the only other thing I want to share is to remind ourselves that last year during FY25, as it was, it became clear that there was a, that fair share was performing better last year, you folks all went back in and supported passage of another chunk of money for circuit breaker. And that was to specifically fund special ed transportation at 100%. And when that happened, it was very helpful to our district. I think, I don't want to, I don't want to try to get too granular, but it was a bit over $300,000 that came our way late in the fiscal year that, you know, we would have hoped for, but at a certain point didn't think it was coming. So, you know, there's definitely work to be done, but I think you all have, the governor and the legislature have done, I think, really good work with trying to tap those funds and trying to be thoughtful about it. I would say, the other thing to add on to Mrs. Visnick is, circuit breaker, to my mind, is the best place to spend money because every single district in the state is challenged to meet the needs of their children whose educational programs cost a lot. And any, you know, you're able to identify additional funds to put into circuit breaker, and that helps every single district and every single community. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza has her hand up.
Thank you. Hopefully my voice cooperates. I just had a question for Senator Lovely. Thank you for your update, and I appreciate how you're multitasking. I'm wondering with these virtual sessions that are happening and the in-person ones, how do you think the reports from the forums can be incorporated into this next budget cycle, given that the report won't be available until June? How do you imagine that will be utilized, that information?
A very good question, Doctor. Again, that was the amendment that was adopted in the FY26 budget was to give the commission a year to be able to get all the listening sessions in in the first six months, which will happen by December 3rd, and then to allow DSE and the Department of Revenue, DLS, Division of Local Services, to be able to drill down with the commission based on that feedback from the communities. I'm not on the commission, I'm not on the Joint Committee on Education, but I can certainly have that conversation on the Senate side with Chair Lewis, who's actually in the chamber. So maybe I'll have a quick conversation with him before we end this meeting. But it's a good question. I can't answer it because you're wondering what's going to happen for FY27, a valid question, and we're not going to have that information until after the budget passes, right? So, or at least that's when the due date is. So let me go in and query him, and I'll come back, see what he can tell us. All right? I'll be right back. You're welcome.
And Representative Bowen has gotten off the train and will be transitioning over to us. Did I see your hand, Dr. Cushing?
I've had this conversation, it's a policy issue. I think that the cell phone ban for schools, while a good first step, I've had this conversation with Representative Bowen, have not had it with Senator Lovely and will as she stepped away, but I really don't think it goes far enough. The simple matter is that students are with us for six to six and a half hours a day. These devices are, have been proven to be negative and deleterious to our youth and especially the access to social media, no matter what the platform is and the devices themselves. Now, with the onset of AI companions for youth, I think that the step needs to be taken for Massachusetts to look further at restricting these devices and regulating them the way children have to get licenses to drive a car or waiting to purchase alcohol or whatever it may be. We regulate harmful things, and the simple fact of the matter is, is that the bullying that happens through these devices, the negative effects of these devices don't necessarily just happen within the hours of school. They're happening at all other times as well. So it's just something that we should be really aware of and really cognizant of. And hopefully, eventually, we'll be able to move forward with something more than just a school time ban.
Okay. Ms. Bowen, we hope you commute safely. If you want to drop and we'll see you in person, does that work?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay. Why don't you drop? We'll take care of just a couple, like, housekeeping items on our agenda, and we'll see you very shortly.
Perfect. See you soon.
Okay, thanks. Senator Lovely, you are still here. We just let Rep. Bowen off the hook.
Yep.
I'm looking around the room. I don't see any more hands. We appreciate you multitasking, being with us tonight for this first conversation. We understand we can provide input and we will have future conversations with you. Thank you so much for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you for yours.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. McKenzie de Franza, I'll get back to you. I could not find the senator, but let me circle back. Okay?
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and just jump real quickly to our meeting records and just do a couple of little housekeeping items while Representative Bowen's on her way to issue a citation. The meeting records from our Committee of the Whole of October 22nd were in our packet. I'm looking for a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Were there any edits or corrections that anyone wanted to bring to the table? Since we do have a member that is remote, I will call the roll. And as a reminder, I think Dr. Silva, you were absent that day. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kim Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Al Epstein.
Lauren De Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. The passes 6, 0 with one abstention. And next, do we want to get into the superintendent's report or do you want me to look at the policy first readings?
Let's go policy first.
Okay. So we're going to go out of order just a little bit. The committee received in its packet four policies for a first reading. This is in our effort to make sure all of our policies are reviewed and updated as necessary in the five-year cycle. Tonight, we have for a first reading, GBA, Gulf Bravo Alpha, Equal Opportunity Employment. We also have GBEA, Echo Alpha, which is our Staff Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy. GBEB, which is Echo Bravo, Staff Conduct. And GBJ, so Gulf Bravo Juliet, our Personnel Records. Everyone had the opportunity to look at the packet over the weekend, and I would ask that you give it a closer look before our meeting on December 10th, where we will take a vote on these items. Thank you to Ms. Bergeron for marking where our policies are the same, where the differences exist. And we'll pick that up at our next regular school committee meeting. We'll also quickly return for a second reading to our recommendation from our Finance and Facilities Subcommittee on FJ, Foxtrot Juliet, which is our policy related to renovations and/or improvements to school or school sites by non-district parties. Ms. Visnick, was there anything that you needed to share with the committee on Foxtrot Juliet?
I just want to remind everybody that this policy exists. And we at FNF earlier this evening talked about quote-unquote advertising our policies a little more or making sure that different entities are aware of our policies. We have, in fact, a history where this policy was violated and not with ill intent and not, but it was very much violated. And we need to make sure, we have an obligation, that when modifications happen to our facilities, that they're done by people who, for instance, are insured and people who are certified. And so you wouldn't want to be, you know, working in a particular building where the electrical was less than 100% certified. So I hope that this will pass easily, and then I hope that we, as a body and as a district, can continue to encourage people to volunteer and help us and donate their time and et cetera. However, we also need to make sure that people are aware of the kind of guardrails that are in place and the constraints that exist.
Is the committee ready to vote on this, or would we like to put it on pause?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Mayor Cahill, vote approve as reviewed?
Second.
Okay.
I thought you needed a motion.
Yeah, I do need a motion to mark it as reviewed, not changing it, not dropping it. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? I'll call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza? Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lauren De Viznick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel. We will mark that as reviewed as of tonight's date, and we welcome Representative Bowen. We will return to our regularly scheduled agenda. I believe you brought a citation with you. And I don't know, Dr. Cushing, if you need...
So, yeah, absolutely. So, earlier this year, the middle school had a student who ingested, swallowed, a, one of those thin Poland Springs bottle caps, and it was lodged in their brachio. And the, correct, as Member Viznick cringes, as well, I feel you on that. But through the quick action of our Assistant Principal, Mr. Twombly, and our school nurse, Ms. Terry Whitaker, they were able to remain calm. We did an after-action review on this, and they remained calm, they remained focused, and were able to quickly get the child transported to Beverly Hospital, and then, if memory serves, transported, they made the decision to urgently transport the child into Boston. And so, this is something that could have gone very differently, and so, I guess, honestly, serves as a warning. Anytime I now see my kids with those caps, I'm swiping them away, because they are very thin and very easy to get lodged. So, at this time, I would like to call forward our school nurse, Terry Whitaker, and our Assistant Principal, Mr. Twombly, to be recognized, and any words, Representative Bowen. Also, Senator Lovely had wished she could be here, but the Senate is still in extended session, and just want to make sure you both get the recognition you deserve for your actions on that day.
Yes, and so, I bring the, the formal versions of the, the thanks and appreciation and sort of awareness raising that we're able to do as a result of, of your actions. So, I have for each of you a citation from the House of Representatives and from the Senate, thanks to Senator Lovely and her team. So, they both say something very similar. The first is, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to..." I have Terri's in front of me, so Terry Whitaker, in recognition of working swiftly with a colleague to provide life-saving care to a Beverly Middle School student. "The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." The Senate version is equally ornate, and, and says, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Terry Whitaker, Beverly School District Nurse, in recognition of being recognized for acting quickly and administering life-saving measures to a student. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate." So, with the congratulations and thanks and appreciation of the House and the Senate, we have one set of citations. Thank you. And is that a...
And Senator Lovely, I see you've just rejoined us.
Yes, just wanted to extend my congratulations. I'm sorry I can't be there, but thank you so much for all you do. You save the life. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lovely. Do we want to take a three-minute recess, or no? No, okay. Let's return to, do you mind if we just wrap up policy? Okay. That will keep us slightly in order in the minutes. We have for a second reading this evening, three policies that came to us from our Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Subcommittee. Those are IHBA, India Hotel Bravo Alpha for Program for Students with Disabilities, IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, and IHBAA, Observations of Special Education Programs. We have track changes turned on in IHBA. It's consistent with our efforts to include guardians and caregivers in our language, as well as to make our pronouns gender neutral. I think those are the only track changes in this set. I would entertain a motion to mark these as reviewed, as edited.
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Thank you, Ms., oh, I got Ms. Viznick. I wrote that down. Are there any discussions? I will call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kim Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lauren De Viznick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. Thank you. Okay. Let's return to the regular order of our agenda and ask Superintendent Dr. Cushing to give his report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just let me pull this up. Okay. So, upcoming, the, under the direction of Mary Vegas, the, the Beverly High School Stage Right Drama Club will be presenting on Friday, the 5th of December, Saturday, the 6th, the 6th of December, and Sunday, the 12th, the 7th of December. Four shows, two matinees, two at 7:00 PM, of Pride and Prejudice. For anyone watching, you can scan the QR code. I've also been emailing out the link for parents, guardians, caregivers, and others to attend the show. Students have been working extremely hard on this production, and really look forward to seeing a lot of community support coming out to support them on those dates. Also, want to give a quick attendance update. Shared this out in my weekly memo, memo last week. So, last month, the October attendance, we had 95.8 district-wide average attendance. Our elementary schools, grade K through 4, were in the 96 to 0.97, so almost 97%. Grades 5 through 8 were at 94.74%, and high school at 93.92%. So, our district monthly goal, we're hoping for 95% of monthly attendance. Interestingly enough, just recently published on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, were staff attendance rates for administrators, teachers, and all other staff that can be searched on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. So, we can also, that will now be published annually by DESI. It is not broken down by school or anything like that, it is just district-wide data across the state for every district. So, competency determination policy, I'll come back to this slide at the end, but Principal Thomas is here to speak to that this evening with me. CTE, I'd like to move to that right now. So, this is required by DESI, was presented last week, if I remember correctly, for the Committee, and is up tonight for adoption. Policy was built off of the DESI model, but there was no model policy shared by MASC, all right? One thing that we need to do is to sign a policy number and categorize in our policy handbook, but I am sure that can be done separate thereof, the adoption of the CTE policy. So, this just clearly lays out what the Beverly Middle School will do to help prepare students for career technical education as they move on to consider other options for that type of education. So, at this time, if there are any questions on the CTE policy, I'm happy to answer them, or if we are vote-ready.
The Chair will move to make a motion, or will make a motion to approve the policy as presented, and pending the Administration's addition of a policy number. Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. Do members have any questions? Ms. Viznick?
Can we also add to the bottom of the policy all the other magic that we normally have at the bottom of policies?
Yes.
Yes.
Can that be part of your motion?
Okay. My friendly amendment from down the table is to also add the dates, cross-references, the...
MGL, especially if there's any MGLs. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the content? Are you ready to vote? Okay. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kim Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lauren De Viznick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes.
I want to thank Ms. Brown for her work on that policy as well, just so that you're all aware. So, last week, we spoke briefly, and a petition was presented to us concerning an LGBTQIA+ advisory committee. Representative Bowen is still in the audience this evening, and as it turns out, there are two districts in the state right now, Sudbury and Worcester Public Schools, that have these advisory committees functioning. So, there is a proposed law in the Massachusetts House, House Bill 3980, which I actually have a copy of here for everybody. Sorry, I meant to hand that out earlier, which I have a copy for you, but I have summarized in these five bullets. So, first is advising the School Committee on Matters That Pertain to the Education and Safety of LGBTQIA+ Students. Meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's programs. Participating in the review of school improvement plans and district improvement plans. And meeting annually with the School Committee upon request of the Advisory Council. Also, the PAC will have to establish their own bylaws. Realizing that there's potential legislation that would launch in, I believe it says, just let me look real quick, will take effect on January 1st, 2027. All right? So, will take effect on January 1st, 2027. My recommendation to the Committee is this, is to support the formation of a community group to partner with the school district through the Superintendent. Advising, this group would be advising the Superintendent concerning the education and safety of LGBTQIA+ students. Meet with, meet a minimum of three times per year with school officials, myself included, to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's programs as pertains to LGBTQIA+ students. Also, for the Beverly School Committee, to issue a letter of support from the School Committee to our Senator and Representative in support of this legislation, and then to await legislation adoption, but not wait to act, as in to basically not take a policy move this evening, as there is pending legislation, but to authorize me to meet with this, not that there needs to be authorization, as this is operational, but to essentially give a potential blessing, and then also the letter of support to the Senate and the House of Representatives for this legislation in support of our LGBTQIA+ youth.
Thank you very much for that summary and for providing copies. I do have one additional copy if someone needs it. Did anyone want to make a comment?
Are we, are we looking for, are we looking for a vote? Are we looking for a motion?
There's actually not a vote on this, and as Chair, when I put this on the agenda, I was going back and forth because our LPAC, which is our English Learner PAC, and our CPAC are both created under Mass General Law, not under the authority of the School Committee, and as we talked about in our last meeting, the Superintendent can form committees of his own will as part of the operations of our district. So, there isn't a formal action of the School Committee, other than the suggestion that Dr. Cushing has made, that we write letters in support of the House Bill 3980 that's currently pending. I don't know if...
Be individual, or are we going to try to do a group thing?
I, I think they should probably be individual. Each of us would have that ability, or if the Committee wanted the Chair to speak on behalf of the Committee, that's something that I wouldn't mind doing. I just don't know if it's more impactful if individually we write letters.
Thanks, Madam President. So, what I understand the Superintendent to be saying is, you're planning to create a PAC of family members, parents, of LGBTQIA+ students? That you're planning to do? You're planning to get, pull, pull a group together?
Or, I guess, you know, have the parents and community members work to pull the group together. I'm happy to be a resource, but to be able to meet with them, to be able to help go through things that I've listed here, to really provide not just tacit support, but active support, to partner with our GSAs that are, GSAs and Rainbow Clubs that are operating in various buildings, and to make sure that the messages are clear. But, I guess, my thing, my, my concern right now is to do something formal where the legislature may make it very formal and ensconced in law, as the CPAC and LPAC currently are.
Right.
Hmm.
So, for CPAC, it's independent. We provide facilities, we provide partnership. I think Ms. Blansky is a resource as well, but the bylaws aren't generated by the district. They're generated from the group, and so, what Dr. Cushing would do is help us just get that group up and running with some direct supports, possibly modeling bylaws that we know exist for our other PACs.
So, we had people here last meeting asking us to create a PAC, right? I think I, for one, want to do that. I understand, and you and I talked about it just the other day, you know, that in, in many instances, that the right, the right move or structure is to be, you know, maybe not an action taken by this body, but, you know, you're able to create groups on your own, you know, in, in your role as Superintendent, and this may not happen. Thousands of bills get filed every year. Love it if this does happen at the state level, that would be wonderful, I think it should. And whatever gets put together in the here and now, you know, I mean, this, as I read this, it doesn't, it's not overly prescriptive anyway, right? So, I guess I'm just saying, please, if we're not going to formally create one as a body, and that's fine, please, Dr. Cushing, make sure that you, you know, work with the families who are here and those who want to be, and, and, you know, help make this happen, and be as supportive as you can. And I know, I know it's your intention to be, but, you know, given, given that we were asked to do something, and we're not, as a body, taking a formal action, whether you as a Superintendent are going to be working with the families, you know, please do, and then, and I guess, please keep us apprised.
Most definitely will, and to go on what Madam President said, can provide space, can provide opportunities to engage with, but I'm going to have to work with those parents to make sure that they're setting up the bylaws, that they're working to, you know, that, that the Committee, that this, that this advisory committee becomes self-sustaining, and we are challenged right now in full transparency in, you know, making sure our LPAC is well-attended. And that's a, that's a challenge, not just in Beverly, that is a challenge across the Commonwealth for many school districts, and so, want to make sure that this group is, that we're really able to build, sustain, and move forward. I have no doubt that that will be the case, but really want to make sure that it is self-sustaining with the supports the district can provide.
Thank you for mentioning the LPAC. I think the CPAC also has had, you know, a sort of a cyclical, and our district role is to provide the supports and to provide the communication pathways for those groups to make sure they're reaching all families, caregivers. Okay. Mayor Cahill?
So, can I further ask you, Dr. Cushing, to make sure that you, and again, I think you're already planning to do this. So can I further ask you, Dr. Cushing, to make sure that you, and again, I think you're already planning to do this, touch base with the individuals who came last week, as, as you talk through with them how this is supposed to get off the ground?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
And then to your point earlier, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to send a letter on behalf of this bill. I think there's a weight to us sending one together. I also would be, you know, happy to propose that we send a letter as a school committee.
Would you like to draft said letter and bring it to our December 10th meeting for a vote of the committee? Or would you like to assign the chair to the task, which is part of our policy?
Oh, the policy is you're supposed to write them?
No, not necessarily write them, but yeah, I have the letterhead for, for a couple more weeks at least.
I, I will take a run at getting you a draft.
Okay, for our December 10th meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get a draft to you. We'll, we'll work on it in my office.
Okay.
I'm just curious, with the representative in the room, and not to put you on the spot, but I guess my question is, like, what traction do you see with House Bill 3980? You know, is this one that should sail through easily? Is this one that's facing opposition? Or, you know, is this the first time you might have ever heard of it?
Yes, happy to be put on the spot on it. I haven't heard much about it, and I believe there was just a hearing last week, so it's still open for written testimony to the Joint Committee on Education. And this is sort of the last wave of hearings the last couple of weeks, so there will be some action in the next couple of weeks to move some things out of committee, and then others will be requesting extensions into the spring. So I would anticipate, since it just had the hearing, that that will be part of the package of things extended into the spring. So, you know, I think it's a narrow enough bill that more likely to be packaged with some other pieces of education policy that are related or moved in that way. But happy to, to reach out to the representative who filed it and, and see where we can be most helpful, and if there is either formal written testimony submitted by the committee or members of the committee to, to follow up on that, or if you want to send those letters to my office and to the senator's office in, in order for us to be able to support the bill along the way, I think any and all of those can, can have an impact.
In addition.
I, I wouldn't expect anything to move too quickly, so if you're thinking about actions to take in the meantime, that's, that's valuable, too.
Okay. I think also, in addition to, I don't have an issue and would welcome actually writing a letter just as the superintendent of schools in support of it, so the, the Committee on Education understands the position.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Biznick.
While, while we have Representative Bowen in the chair, can you offer any insight into how the Joint Committee decides what they move forward versus what they hold for the next term? And in particular, maybe as it relates to how quickly the cell phone ban bill moved through, based on orders from above, shall we say? And, and, and then do we have, is, you know, the cell phone ban bill went because there was such a common belief in it? And so my question maybe is, is there a common belief in this we're seeing? MAS-C just had their conference last week, and there was a session specifically on the rise of hate, the normalization of hate. And so I would hope that the same way the cell phone ban bill went through quickly, that something like this would have more of a chance of going through quickly versus, as the mayor said earlier, we know that thousands of bills are filed, and somebody has to decide what goes through and what waits. So you got anything for us in that, in that kind of space?
Not, not a ton, unfortunately, because it really is a whole collection of so many different factors. So definitely hearing from a lot of districts that something is important in schools across the state is more likely to move the Education Committee to feel that urgency. And yes, there is sort of a set of leadership priorities. So the fact that our state senator is in leadership on the Senate side means that we, as a community, have some voice in, in those discussions. The impact of, you know, when there is sort of a collective voice, like an association of, of school committees that can say, yes, there are 30 priorities right now, and of those, here are five, that there's like a really clear action that could be taken. So even though there's still more discussion to be had on others, these can move, like, all of those things can happen. So I would say, yes, weighing in helps and, and is worthwhile. And, you know, we, we can help elevate what the committee is saying to not only the Education Committee that has the bill now, but, but to others in the State House, and, and just try and socialize it more, but it really is the, that whole combination of, of how many voices are weighing in, how quickly, how urgent something feels, and how, how are all of the other competing priorities playing out in, in that moment? So I, I cannot pretend that in six months I have figured out what the pathway is for a particular bill, but I think it's, yeah, I, to the earlier question, haven't, haven't heard specific pushback to this concept. I think the Education Committee is thinking about all the things we were talking about earlier in terms of just education funding challenges and, and what we were talking about in terms of the, the pressures on students and educators and everyone in the building as the world changes. So, you know, this being a, a response to a challenge among many responses to many challenges, it's also possible for things to kind of fall through the cracks if they're not given that, that broader support. So the fact that, you know, there are representatives from other districts who introduced and have been championing this to add voices from this district, I think, strengthen it.
Thank you so much. Are we ready to move on? Thank you, Ms. Bowen. We're going to circle back to competency?
Competency determination. If Principal Thomas is in the room, would like to join. So just some quick bullet points. Competency determination, this has been mandated by DESI. It was thought to have been settled last year, when districts were asked to issue a competency determination policy. This summer, that changed, so notification was issued in about late July. I have linked, and will share this out on the district website, but the DESI resource page for competency determination, a webinar also linked was held. I've shared that with the whole committee previously. Also new, this has never been done before, graduation requirements will be shared for every single high school across the state on DESI's website. So we have to submit those by December 31st, as well as this competency determination. All competency determinations will be shared publicly, and similar to before, you know, this is just a first reading, but the need to assign the policy handbook number and categorize. But Mr. Thomas has done significant work on this. We've met with a member of the school committee to sensitize it and to have conversations around it, and just want to make sure that it's been a very inclusive process of our staff, of our leaders, to make sure that we're really reviewing what needed to be done here. Principal Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I get into the specifics on this, I just want to note the hard work of Humanities Director Paul Casey and STEM Director Dr. Jennifer Thomas. They, they've done a lot of behind-the-scenes work on this, and really appreciate their efforts. So when we're talking competency determination, that's, that is what MCAS used to accomplish for, for schools and throughout the state. And then you have your local graduation requirements. This is now the threshold at which we're looking for students to achieve, to receive their competency determination. So I, I think the best way to, to go through this is quickly give you a, a little overview of each subject area. With that being said, the state is asking that students can do this two ways, completing a capstone project or portfolio project that meets or exceeds expectations as outlined in the specific course, or passing the course's final exam aligned with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks for each specific course. So for us, what that means is, if, if you think about it, the, the MCAS subjects is probably the easiest way to, to think about this. So with English, that really looks at ninth and 10th grade English, although passing a final in any one of the four years will meet your CD as you go through. And the, what we've done with that is also, as we can use projects or capstone projects to achieve that, we're also going to look at the research paper that's tied in each year. So it'll be an and/or for us. We think most students will get through the finals just fine, one of those four finals over the course of their time, but they also have the opportunity to pass the research project. That's for English. History, which goes into effect next year, will be taking into account US I and US II, very similar to English. It will be around passing one of the finals for one of those two years, and, excuse me, for both of those years, and then, then a, then a paper in either or year. So again, what we had to do, and, and what comes into play with, not so much with English, because you have English every year, but with history, science, and math, and I'll get into this very quickly, is that right now we have seniors, juniors, and sophomores who have moved past some of these courses, and the, the rules have kind of changed on them a little bit based on the requirements. And so we've, we've woven in some, some ways to make sure or ensure that our students are receiving their competency determination that are already in their senior year, junior year, sophomore year, because we do monitor those students throughout. That's, that's our common practice. That's something we've, we've done, you know, as long as I've been in Beverly, to support those students and make sure they're receiving what they need. So when it comes to history, if a student does not pass one of those finals or one of those papers, will, we've had it set up where if they take a course beyond, a US history course beyond US II, that will satisfy the need along with, along with those other two pieces. So going down to science, really the, the thought is biology was the MCAS subject, and so the, the hope would be most students will pass their final in biology. But as long as they pass a final in biology, chemistry, physics, or engineering, they'll be able to achieve their competency determination in that subject area. Again, for us, we, we want to make it so, we were covering all our students, so we did put in the caveat of if they pass four lab sciences over their time in high school, that will achieve mastery as well. We also have a portfolio woven into our engineering program, and that's, that's something that, that's our final, is our engineering portfolio, so that, that matches up nicely to give students an alternative to get through as well. Lastly, math, similar to science in a sense of, we're trying to get them through Algebra I and Geometry, passing those finals, but if not, they're able to, if they take a higher-level course than Algebra II in math, then that will satisfy the competency determination. And again, similar to what we do with engineering, in our 12th grade math class, College Review Math, there will also be a portfolio in place for students that can exhibit all the standards that they may have been exposed to in Algebra I and Geometry. So that's, that's a really quick overview. This is kind of thick stuff as you get into it, and, you know, I, I'm happy to talk individually with anybody about this, but I did want to make sure that you had at least an understanding of kind of what we're looking at here in this pretty detailed document.
Can I, oh, Ms. Biznick has a question, then I have one, if hers isn't the same.
Perhaps a bit of a nuance in the history section, Part B, completion of a US history course beyond US History II. Note the, the word completion versus in math, Part B, the, the words are successful completion. Is that on purpose, or was that perhaps simply omitting the word successful out of the history department?
Simple omission, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
My question is similar to that. When it says completion, that means a passing grade?
Correct.
And a passing grade is?
60.
60.
Yep.
Silva, sorry, I was writing a note.
That's okay. With regard to the sciences, so you have biology, chemistry, physics, and.
Engineering.
Engineering.
Yeah.
So, but with, what, what I thought I heard was that the competency would be the successful completion or passing of biology?
So. MCAS was obviously biology, and you had opportunities to take on the subject, so most of our students, it was biology. So we think most of our students, when they take biology in ninth grade, will satisfy their competency determination by passing the final. That's, that's their first crack at a final in, in a high school science course. We think most students will get through that, and at least, that, once they've done that, they've checked that off, you know? But there's opportunities beyond that as they get into chemistry as a sophomore, or physics as a junior, or engineering as a junior, so on and so forth. Only one year is required, yes.
Only one year of science is required at the high school level? For competency. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Silva's question has prompted my, I guess, follow-on question. If biology was not successfully completed, is our district expectation that it would be repeated, either through summer school or?
No, so, so you could have a scenario where a student does not pass biology as a course. That's for credit. That's towards your local graduation requirement. The, passing the final is what would help you earn your CD. So in, I guess.
In theory.
You could have a student that either didn't pass the course, but passed the final, or vice versa. And if that were to happen, as far as the first scenario, if they don't pass the course, a lot of, they have the opportunity to, to take biology in summer school. However, they only need three lab sciences to, to meet their graduation requirement. So it doesn't have to be biology. It could be chemistry, physics, engineering. Those, those would satisfy as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Sabell.
Yes, Dr. McKenzie.
Sorry, thanks. I know it's hard to juggle the Zoom and, and being there with the screen share. I had two questions. I'm wondering if there exists a document that does a bit of a side-by-side for what has changed compared to what I'm seeing, like what we're proposing? And whether this applies to different types of pathways? So I'm wondering, for example, with regard to our students who have IEPs, you know, how much has changed from what was typically done before? And then the final piece of that question is, has any of this been informed by our CPAC? So, so what's, what are the major? So what are the major shifts, if anything? How has special education been impacted by any of those shifts, if at all? And has CPAC weighed in on any of these pieces of that shift?
So in regard to special education, an ed plan would dictate how we modify or accommodate any of these final exams, curriculum, that's, there is a section in here on that. And just like with MCAS, that's talked about in the students' annual meeting, prescribed, and implemented by the teachers, you know, day-to-day. As far as input from the CPAC, I did not have contact with them over this.
I think it's important too.
Thank you for that.
We don't, I'm sorry. It might be helpful. Next time, we can look at just straight requirements from the state. It might just that kind of dual look, because like you were saying, like you didn't realize there was just one year of science requirement for a CD. So what were the requirements? You have them embedded in here, but we can kind of see back and forth between the two.
Yeah, I think that kind of side-by-side would be really helpful. I mean, it may not be a dramatic shift, but I think seeing it like that, that one line, I was pretty surprised too. But when you have students who are, you know, college-bound and trying to look at what colleges are anticipating, they may have a different set of personal expectations that may not necessarily mirror what is required. So I think just seeing that would be, you know, perhaps helpful, not just to us, but, you know, maybe families trying to understand as well.
I think it's important to note as well that our Beverly High School, our local graduation requirements are a much higher threshold than the CD requirement. And that's kind of a threshold set forth by the state across every school where our local requirements are. Like, science is a good example of that, where one science course satisfies the CD, we say three lab sciences and an elective in science is your graduation requirement.
Okay, yeah. Again, super helpful clarifying that. And I think just, you know, to Erin Brown's point, just kind of understanding those differentials will be great now that we have more autonomy on how this might look differently in different districts.
Sure.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. So you said you received this notification in late July that the?
I think closer to August.
Okay, August. So we're all, we're all families of students who are in danger of not receiving the MCAS competency diploma, whatever we're calling it now. Were they informed of this? And is everybody, is everybody aware that their students could be in danger of not getting a diploma if they're not passing or if they're not doing well right now? Like, that's just a little scary for some parents, I would imagine.
So process on my part, I think it's important to have this voted through here before I'm doing any work with families on what steps we're taking around this. If you go back to last year, and Dr. Cushing referred to it from the spring, we had had to do this process last school year with the projection of it extending through this year. When we were notified in the summer that things, they were looking for something different. That's when we started this process of lining this all up, and that's why we're here today to get that approved so we can move forth and work with our families. I will say, I am confident we've got, assuming students meet our Beverly High School graduation requirements, that we've got it lined up where they will also meet their CD requirements. So we purposely did a lot of that work. If you remember our conversations, I talked about the Bs, you know, a lot of the Bs we added in that to meet those, that criteria.
Okay.
I do want to also really reiterate that many districts that I spoke to, you know, superintendents I've spoken to on this, were a little surprised at the shift when this was considered to have been settled last year. And so many people were, many people that I've spoken to, where I'd say, I don't want to use the word confused, but were a little surprised that what had been worked on last year comprehensively was now all of a sudden getting another redo. And while the webinar was on, I believe, August 6th, and there was initial notifications put out in about mid to late July, the reality is, is that, you know, it's a very short timeline. And Principal Thomas, his team partnering with Central Office, we've been able to put this together with most of the work on Principal Thomas and his team's shoulders to get this done. But I would agree that I'm also confident that this document has been written in a way that our students who are meeting their local requirements for Beverly High School will be able to be successful with the competency determination as well. We also, I mean, there's little feeling that this won't change in the next three to four years. I mean, there's already conversations happening that were in the press about end-of-course assessments and things like that that are not to be gone into tonight. But I would be surprised if this is the last time this body is considering competency determination in the relatively short term of the next few years. I could be 100% wrong.
Ms. Biznick, is it pertaining to the beginning part of this? Because I do wonder if Mr. Thomas wants to finish presenting.
I'm through what I intended to, and?
Okay. So Ms. Biznick, your question, please.
This looks like it's going to be another policy. Dr. Cushing said something about it being a policy, but I don't see an asterisk on the, this is our first reading. What's, where are we? Okay, thanks.
Officially on the record, first reading.
Thanks.
Yes, we had printed copies at our last meeting, but we didn't have the presentation. So thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thanks, everyone.
And now for the main event. I actually set up chairs for all of our principals, not realizing that it was going to be one at a time, but you're all welcome to come up and have the MCAS party with Ms. Brown.
I think they'll all probably stay in the back, come up one by one. That's what they're used to, so they'll probably do that. So thank you for having us tonight. I'm excited to come here tonight and celebrate instruction and learning across the district, highlighting the many gains that our students have made and our faculty have made with our students over the past year. Certainly, there's always areas of growth that every single school and student and teacher could have. And certainly, we always look at that. But tonight, we really want to highlight the great areas of instruction that are happening and student learning. I think it's important to start with the idea that MCAS is just one point of data. We have a lot of different ways of assessing students and student learning. And I think it's really important for the sake of students to remind them that this one assessment doesn't define who they are as a learner. And it's really important to look at all those multiple ways. Our teachers have projects and unit assessments and different things going on, as well as our benchmarks and final exams and things of that nature. So we have a lot of different ways to look at data and student growth. And so it's really important for families and students to just not be defined by one piece of data. It is important. It's a piece of information that we use to kind of look at student learning and instruction in our building, but it's only that one piece. And in terms of schools, thinking about, you know, our staff who, we reflect on data. We have been a very data-forward district for many, many years. And I often think that, you know, the question comes up, why do test scores ebb and flow over time at different schools or different places? And there are many reasons for that. In particular, when you have new curriculum, you know, we certainly experienced the pandemic. And then after the pandemic, we were afforded the opportunity to buy some new curriculum for our district. But with that, we have to think about, what does that really mean? So Dr. Flaherty last year used, would say, you know, it takes three to five years to see the fruits of new curriculum in achievement scores. And I agree with her on that, but you have to really think about, why is that? And that's because teachers come in and they work really hard, and they prepare their lessons, and they're using certain tools to do that. And when you bring in new curriculum, it's the same standards, but it's new tools and it's new plans. They're completely revamping everything that they were doing. So that takes a lot of time to, if you think about that, how much time it takes to just know the lessons that you're teaching and being really masterful and how you're creating those and implementing those, to having something brand new in front of you and getting used to that and sharing that and being masterful at using that. So they've done an amazing job across the district, and that's just one factor that kind of influences how scores look. The other piece is just change in a building, change across the district, things that happen. You know, people retire, people move to different jobs, people move away, things happen. And when that happens, you know, you're certainly replacing people on teams at grade levels and so forth. But you're getting people up to speed, again, on usually new curriculum to them. And sometimes they're brand-new teachers, and so you're doing the new curriculum implementation with helping them get up to speed as being educator. And so those are all important things to remember when we're looking at student achievement scores. And I think, you know, I just wanted to share that with you because, you know, it's one point of data. With that being said, as a district, I said we're very forward-thinking in our use of data. For many, many years, we've been using data to inform our instruction in the classroom. And so just to kind of take a little bit of time to give you an example, with MCAS data, what we do is we look at a student achievement across the district. In schools in particular, teachers are looking at their individual students. We're looking at achievement. We're looking at growth. And we're looking at our aggregate all the way through our subgroup. So there's a lot of information just with MCAS alone, never mind all of our benchmark assessments. And your teachers looking at their individual assessments when they're assessing students, whether it's on a project or so forth. But they take that information on MCAS and how we did, and then they examine the standards. And they say, okay, how did we do on the standards? You know, we get detailed reports on that. And where were we strong and where were we weak? And then we look at our scope and sequence, and we say, where does that, you know, that area that might have been weaker, where is that in our sequence? Maybe it's closer to when the MCAS is given. Maybe we don't have quite enough time on that. Maybe we need to enhance instruction on that, and we need to tweak things and move things around or enhance it. And then we also look at things like, what are the exact questions? We look at the released questions. How did our students do on that? So where were we strong? Where were we weak? Why? And I think that's important to know, that the amount of time and effort in grade-level meetings and staff meetings, that both the administration and the teachers are really looking at data all the time and how it informs their instruction. They go back, whether it's on their individual class unit project or exam, and they're looking at, how did my students do? And how do I use that data to improve my instruction and improve the achievement of my students? So I'd just like to share that as an example and commend our teachers and administrators for the amount of work they do. I feel, you know, in talking to other people from other districts, we do a really, really strong, strong job with that. And, you know, it's certainly something that I think definitely affects student academic outcomes. So tonight, I'd like to share a few pieces of data with you myself, and then the principals will come up and share some highlights and some of their future next steps. So here you can see just a general accountability. There are different ratings across the state. We've made substantial and moderate progress at the elementary schools. You can see the accountability percentile, and that is when you're looking at total points versus other schools within the state. And finally, then you have the average ELA achievement score in each of the schools, as well as the math achievement score. And then on the next slide, you'll see the same for the middle school and the high school. And we'll talk a little bit about the high school in a few minutes, only because, you know, kind of thinking about MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement and the impacts of that. So again, you can see those scores. Nope, that's fine. You can keep going. Thank you. Thank you, Viana. So just turning quickly to our elementary MCAS strengths at North Beverly. Grade four in math had 75% of their students meet or exceed the expectations. And in grade three math, 70% met or exceeded. And they had the highest growth in grade four math at 61% across the district. In AERS, the accomplishments were grade three math scores with 72% met or exceeded. And grade three ELA, 62% met or exceeded. And they were recognized by DESI for returning to pre-pandemic levels. So congratulations to them. That's a huge accomplishment. At Cove, they gained 13 points in grade three ELA and gained eight points in grade four math. And their Hispanic Latino subgroup gained seven points in math, excuse me. So congratulations to them. Centerville, grade four ELA, 64% met or exceeded. And grade four math, 67% met or exceeded. And grade four math and ELA, their growth was at 55 and 57%, respectively. And they were also recognized for returning to pre-pandemic levels. So congratulations to Centerville as well. And finally, Hannah Elementary, gained 19 points and went from 40 to 59% meeting exceeding in grade three ELA, gained 13 points from 39 to 52 in grade four ELA, and had the highest growth in grade four ELA at 64%. So congratulations to all our elementary schools working really hard. And you can see the positive gains across the district. At Beverly Middle School, grade seven math increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, surpassing the state average by eight points. Grade five math increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding from their previous year's scores by nine points, and that was the highest gain in the middle school. Grade six continues to be 13 points above the state average for students meeting or exceeding in math. And grades five, six, and seven have all broken into the mid-40s for the number of students meeting or exceeding in one or more content areas. So congratulations to BMS and all of their accomplishments. Next, we have the high school. In terms of high school, MCAS is no longer necessary for graduation. So we expected a dip across the state, which occurred. And if you saw back on the accountability rating, they have the same accountability rating they did last year, which was a huge jump for the high school. So that is, it shows how the whole state kind of dipped because of it not being a graduation requirement. And the expectation was the first year, you'd probably see the largest dip. Most of the movement was from those in the meeting to partially-meeting category, which again, was to be expected. Some of the highlights, and again, I'm only highlighting a few things for each school, was the Hispanic Latino subgroup increased the number of students meeting and exceeding in math. So that was wonderful to see, kind of going against the grain, so. And they continued to be above the state average in science. So congratulations to BHS on those highlights. And now I will call up Amy Blanchard, and she will talk a little bit about her highlights in a little more detail and her next steps.
I apologize in advance for my voice. It's in rough shape right now. Some of my information will be a little redundant because Erin did share some of it. But at North Beverly, we'll start looking at our accountability. We made substantial progress toward our targets at 62%, and our accountability percentile is at 77%. We can move on. About a month ago, I did get an email from US News Weekly indicating that North Beverly was ranked number one in Beverly for the elementary schools. And what I loved about that is that their formula that they used not only looked at our MCAS data for ELA in math, but it also looked at our MCAS data in content. our MCAS data for ELA and math, but it also looked at our MCAS data in context with our socioeconomic demographics, which have changed significantly recently. So I think that was a pretty huge accomplishment for us. Our math scores have been impressive throughout the school. For all of our students and our students in our low income categories, we exceeded our typical growth. And in math, our student growth percentile was at 61%. If you look below, I did a little look at our longitudinal data. So my first year's principal in 2022, we had in grade three, 4% of our students exceeding expectations in math. This past year, we had 32% of our students exceeding in math. And similarly, in grade four, my first year, we had 7% of our students exceeding in math. And this past year, we had 24% of our students succeed, exceeding in math. Looking over at our ELA scores, for all students, our students in our high need and our low income groups had typical growth, but on the higher level. And our English language proficiency increased by 5.2%. And this is just giving you a little bit further breakdown of our scores. In ELA, we had 61% of our students in grade three meeting or exceeding. And in grade four, we had 57% of our students meeting or exceeding. In math, which I had mentioned has been an area of growth, huge success for us, at grade three, we had 71% of our students meeting or exceeding. And at grade four, we had 75% of our students meeting or exceeding. And now just looking forward to our next steps, as Erin had mentioned, when you adopt a new curriculum, things change. And our ELA scores are not as strong as I would like them to be. But now we're in year five of implementation and we've put the program to work with fidelity for years and now we can put back into place the things that we know really worked for us. So some of the things that we will be looking at to strengthen is deepening our writing instruction. We'll be adding back anchor papers, incorporating student scoring and revision cycles, which in the past has served us very well. We had noticed when looking at the writing samples provided by Jesse, students who typically write fabulously on paper, when they were asked to type, were not showing the same progress. So this year, we have added in typing instruction to grades two through four. Another area that they give us rankings on our accountability, zero to four is our ranking for our attendance. Last year, North Beverly had cut a zero. So we need to do some significant work on our absenteeism. So that is something that I'm really working on as at the building level. And lastly, to improve our ELA growth, we'll be strengthened by focusing on our learning walks, explicit instruction, identifying and utilizing most impactful teaching strategies with, this is very important, with consistent spiral review of these skills. And this is the approach we used probably about five or six years ago with our math and that has paid off for us in huge dividends. So that's where we're at now. I know a lot of focus is always put on grades three and four when we look at this accountability, but honestly, those baby steps start off in kindergarten and this is a collaborative effort with my entire staff. So I am just so grateful for all the work they do. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the time tonight. This is how we keep people in the seats. MCAS at 9:30. So Amy's got a, you know, bad voice and I'm, I have, I've never been up this late in a long time, so I'm gonna do my best here. Erin did such a comprehensive job introducing this, so we can skip this and go right to the highlights here. So at Centerville, we really set collaborative goals starting in June, prior to the school year. And honestly, we were not sure sort of how we were gonna end up with our MCAS scores based on last year. Because when we did our mid-year benchmarks, we were really sort of off the mark from where we would want to have been after after some of the disruptions. And so, and then knowing that MCAS starts very soon after those mid-year benchmarks, we were like, oh, gosh, what's gonna happen? One thing that we did know for sure is that people were really trying to make the most of the days that we had at school and the and the students that we had had there. So one of our big highlights that we, or one of our goals, I should say, was really thinking about increasing the amount of reading. As Erin had mentioned, being in this implementation phase, we were sort of collectively saying, geez, I just don't think kids are reading enough, I just don't think kids are reading enough. And so that was a real strategic focus for us last year that I think has paid off for us. You know, I think I say the same thing every time because it's true every time. You know, we've been on a math journey for a few years and it will be true for years going forward. So I think that it takes a lot of time and thoughtful planning to create experiences to support our kids as math thinkers. And that is work that comes hard and comes slow. And I think it's paying off for us, but it's it's work that we're gonna stay steady with. So you'll hear me say that, you've heard me say that for years and I will say that for years to come. And as Erin mentioned, I just wanna sort of second, like, this work doesn't happen without our staff. And so I wanna just appreciate the staff at Centerville who who really bring an openness, they bring creativity, they bring a sense of humor and a dedication to just keep doing better each year. And so I wanna thank them for that because, you know, we say, learning is hard and change is hard. And I just appreciate the work that people are doing to to stay in it for kids.
Dr. Silva?
How often does a curriculum change?
It really depends. I mean, you know, I look at a cycle-
In the school district, as a policy, is there like a, is there a policy understanding that it is difficult to bring in a new curriculum and it takes time to sort of work through new materials, new content? You know, that that would sort of indicate that there might be like a sweet spot in terms of, if there's a new curriculum, we need six years. And then after six years, you hope, you kind of hone in on it and you can use it up to a certain point, but then there's a time when new curriculum comes in to sort of replace it. So just understanding that that evolution, what is the right time for new curriculum to last?
Generally speaking, it ebbs and flows and it depends on the district and how much money they have at that given time and at different given times. So you're looking at a three to five implementation, you like teachers to be able to then work within that for probably another five years. And so 10 years is probably how it generally flows. But we have, I've been here 21 years, it's been many more than that, you know, so it really just depends on what the funding is at those times as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I was just curious about-
I'm glad I didn't have to answer that question. It's a really tough question to answer because not, you know, every year you have got new kids, right? And so it's not, it's new curriculum, it's new kids, it's new, it's new needs. And so that's a really, thank you for taking that question. These are some of the numbers that Erin had already shared for our ELA scores. Obviously, 53% is sort of a baseline for us in third grade. And that 64% is an 11% increase for that cohort of students from third grade. So we're really happy to see that because that makes us feel like we are in that post-implementation phase and feeling a little bit stronger about where, what we're doing. And so, and I think we're moving in the right direction. Similar to math, we just keep, just keep on keeping on, the 67% is a 6% increase from, for that cohort of students. And so we're always aiming between 5 and 15% increase year over year for our MCAS scores. And next step, so I, our next steps have already started. So as I said, the the goal setting starts for us in June. And so I wanted to, with our first beaver there, sort of acknowledge a community goal for us. We really were looking at our summer slide. So, you know, we work so hard to get our kids to where they're at in June and then they come back in September and we were experiencing an 11 to 15% drop in our reading scores in just a couple of months. And so I would say last year, we did a lot, a big push for summer reading with our parents, with our kids, and we cut our summer slide to 5%. So we're starting off in a better place this year. And that's, that's for our parents, right? We're not with our kids in the summer, so we were celebrating our parents last night at our PTO meeting and we were constantly thanking them and constantly sending the message around supporting reading, like, we want to see our students as readers. And so that is something that we talk a lot about at Centerville. The continued math planning is still, still a next step for us. And then while last year, we were focusing on reading more, this year, our focus was really reading more deeply and being more thoughtful about the work that we're doing. So our strategic focus is really teaching explicit comprehension and vocabulary strategies. And that's work that has already, has already started, it feels right to us and something that we're doing collectively. Yes, and I'm going to, while Kate's coming up here, one of the activities that we did in that comprehension work is we actually use a fourth grade package, passage from the MCAS. So I knew you guys were gonna see a lot of numbers tonight. And so whether it's a souvenir or homework for this night, I'm gonna give you the fourth grade, one of the released items, just so that you can look at it with your nine and 10-year-old reading eyes. And brought up a lot of conversations for us, so.
Tyler. Good evening. So I'm here to celebrate Cove, which is always one of my favorite things to do. So we already saw our accountability score and I'd like to just point out a few highlights on the next slide of some things that kind of stand out. As you all know, last year was my first year at Cove and it was very strategically one of listening and understanding the school and the culture in putting a lot of things into place to form committees to better understand what the, you know, what their focus focuses had been and kind of where we were going and get, get some action planning. And now this year, year two, is kind of just now partnering with them rather than being kind of, you know, new and getting down to work. But out of urgency last year in my first year, there were some things that we did kind of shift to do differently. And very much out of urgency, in fact, we called it an urgency data meeting mid-year, was to really look at the whole student. Our students that were underperforming, there's so much more data that goes along with them other than just their math and ELA scores. And so partnering with our Community Connects counselor, who's been, you know, in a vital role there, and our counselors and special educators and our multilingual teacher, really digging in and looking at students at the whole and creating students a prioritized list to really understand the whole picture of the whole child, including the SCL needs. As Amy, you know, mentioned, the demographic of our school is also rapidly changing. And so responding to that from a holistic standpoint, including many members of the team, not just academically, has been key and we continue to do that. We also identified students that were really on the, we call it the cusp of meeting expectations. And so we, in that mid-year data meeting, really isolated some students that we felt were not meeting their potential. And through a variety of strategies, including one-on-one goal setting with the students, we really dug in and set a high expectation for them. All of those students that we identified as having the potential to meet expectations did, in fact, then go on and meet expectations. So really looking at them through that SCL lens was vitally important to their success. And so that's a celebration. We also are very focused on our subgroup analysis from an equity standpoint. Students with disabilities and really the high needs as a whole are numbers that we watch continually. And, you know, as you can see, we have some trajectory moving in the right direction and now we just hope to capitalize thought that on that and keep going. On the next slide says again, just kind of a very, you know, broad overview of where we were meeting and exceeding on ELA. And on the next slide, math, which is quite repetitive. But the next steps, the good stuff, is really being focused around our building goals and bringing those building goals to life every single day when we walk in the building and very specifically when we get together to be planful as staff. So staff this year are creating their own action planning SMART goals to examine best practices and make some actionable strategies related to all different points of data. But, you know, really thinking about our building goals that's connected to the data that we just looked at and thinking about that tier one instruction. We continue to develop our flexible win block planning, win standing for what I need, which really is a targeted intervention and extension block that sits separately from our wit and wisdom and our math blocks, our ELA and our math blocks. So we can be just very targeted and very strategic about students. In addition, using staff meetings as professional development. Time, I said this to the staff, we had a meeting today, but I've said it every time we get together, time planning as colleagues is so precious and there's not enough time in the day. So being really thoughtful about any time the adults in our building are getting together to plan, we're gonna be really focused and use that as our own professional development. And so that's part of our planning now. We're also continuing to just really dig in to instructional planning with an equity lens and looking at our students as the whole child. A teacher reminded me of a quote a couple weeks ago that I put in the memo, you have to have Maslow's before we can have Bloom's. So Maslow being the hierarchy of basic needs, Bloom's being the taxonomy of complexity. And we really do, we need to make sure kids are fed and feel safe before we can expect them to meet these rigorous standards. And so we're doing that daily, really as a whole building. And so that continues to be our efforts. And then also really capitalizing on the cross-district collaboration and the amazing resources that we have at the other four buildings and not to mention vertically at the middle school and high school. And so really thinking about what we already have in-house to just enhance our professional development and go out and bring back. And so that's been a real emphasis this year as well. Questions? Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We can go right to our Hannah highlights slides. I'd like to remind everybody that we are in our 250th Hannah-iversary this year, folks. So get ready to see Hannah represent in the upcoming holiday parade. And that's the frame for our year ahead at Hannah. So some of our highlights that wrap around the MCAS results, we had a 10% increase in on-time arrivals, supported by the Attendance Heroes Program. That was massive for us. At Hannah, we really, our attendance issue is really a tugginess issue. So we're really pleased to see kids getting here on times, they get right into their learning every morning. Last year, at the end of the year in the spring, we had 92% of our grade one students meeting their year-end benchmark at Dibbels. So they're starting the year in grade two on a secure foundation to continue their learning and reading. You've heard me talk at school committee a couple of times in the last two years about our playful learning and the strategy being one that is focused on deeper learning, developmentally appropriate practices. And now we have data that shows that this has resulted in grade four achievement on both Lincoln and on MCAS that has a direct correlation between playful learning strategies, more writing happening in those classrooms, and we're so pleased to be able to quantify that now. We also use the what I need blocks in grades two and grade three, and those are driven by our weekly data analysis that happens in our grade level teams with our instructional coaches. And students are working in dynamic groups across the grade level to target specific learning goals and those groups change up all the time. I also want to highlight Project Lead the Way, our science program that we've been piloting now. This is our second year with Project Lead the Way, bringing authentic inquiry-based experiential learning to all grade levels with the support of our great STEAM teacher, Mr. Wood. Overall this year, excuse me, we're really pleased to see that we're in our meeting and exceeding range at 59% for grade three ELA and 56% for grade four ELA. We had more double exceeding this year in grade three and grade four than we had in quite some time. And we can move on to math. And this year in math, our grade three was at 56% meeting and exceeding and grade four math at 60% meeting and exceeding. And as we move into next steps, I want to celebrate each and every student at the Hannah Elementary School for all the gains that were made last year. Erin and Amy and all of my colleagues have spoken about the fact that it starts at grade one and goes up. That is certainly true all the way along. Every single faculty member has a hand in the success that is illuminated by MCAS. So this year going ahead, we remain focused on two major goals and that's decreasing the number of students in the grade three and four at-risk category on MCAS. Students are working with each grade level to participate professional, in professional development that is embedded. And again, we do our goal setting, starting in the spring, teachers are reflecting on the performance of students and then starting to set their goals ahead. And this year, they are focusing on creating professional development goals that are rooted in both looking at at-risk data categories and using playful learning strategies in the classroom to accelerate student learning. We're going to continue to leverage that playful- in the grade-three and four at-risk category on MCAS. Students are working with each grade level to participate in professional development that is embedded. And again, we do our goal-setting, starting in the spring, teachers are reflecting on the performance of students and then starting to set their goals ahead. And this year, they are focusing on creating professional development goals that are rooted in both looking at at-risk data categories and using playful learning strategies in the classroom to accelerate student learning. We're going to continue to leverage that playful learning across all grade levels. And we also have grade-four this year moving into math-based studio learning, which is really exciting to see that taking shape because now these are students who have been using playful learning strategies for three years. Playful learning strategies go across all content areas. And it's exciting to see the students having the opportunity to get creative, get excited about content area, using a lot of voice and choice. And also, it's evolving into a more rigorous classroom atmosphere. So thank you, everybody, for sharing those, participating in the success and sharing those highlights. And I also want to celebrate my coaches for all of the hard work that they are doing over this year in setting our goals. Thank you. Hi, everyone. So I'm here representing Ayers tonight. Very excited about that. The last elementary school, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it brief. I'm gonna keep it brief here. We're gonna go right to highlights. So as Erin mentioned, we are very excited to have been invited by DESI to a December conference, a celebration of academic success. And that is an opportunity for us to visit with other schools who fall into the same boat and network and brainstorm the things that have worked well and share with each other. So we're very excited to go to that, report out on what we've done and share back with Beverly. So we'll have follow-up on that. Highlights in ELA and math, we've met the targeted achievement goal for all of our students in both grades-three and four for ELA and math. And that is very exciting. The Department of Education has a very special algorithm that they create that says if this is where you scored in 2024, this is what you should to keep on pace, on target, score in 2025. And so we were able to meet all of those in all of our grade levels and all the content areas. And I think the biggest celebration for us is our students with disabilities category, not only met but exceeded the targets for students in ELA and math with our students with disabilities scoring an average of three points higher than the target set for us. And then in math, an average of four points higher. So that's really a celebration, a testament to the hard work of our students, but also the collaboration between our Learning Center teachers and our general ed teachers. This is the slide that you've seen many times before. So meeting and exceeding in ELA and math. And then jumping to what our next steps are. We've spent a lot of time at Ayers in the last few years talking about instructional practices. And the reason that we've been focusing on instructional practices is because they can be used with any content area at any grade level. There are things that we know are effective. So at Ayers this year, we are really focusing on teacher clarity, which is, do teachers understand what the essence of the lesson is? Are they able to explain that simply to students so that they understand that? And do they have success criteria that they share? And then differentiation in tiers one and two in the general education classroom, which is something that a lot of our other elementary schools are also working on. We continue to use data with the help of our instructional coaches to make sound instructional decisions. And moving forward for us, the data is showing us that our students in the high-needs subgroup are not making as much progress as other students. That, again, is part of kind of a DESI categorization, that is, students who fall into the high-needs subgroup, they can be students with disabilities, but they can also be students who have switched schools more than once or twice, who have attendance issues, who are low-income. There's a variety of different factors in that. And so while we know that our students with disabilities are scoring well, there are still students within our high-needs subgroups who need more support. And we're focused on that wraparound support for the sphere that we can control, which is during the academic school day. So that's what we will be focusing on going forward. Any questions?
Good evening, late evening. Thank you for having me tonight. So we're gonna report out, I'm gonna skip right past this as Erin already talked a bit about it, and just highlight some things that we're working on at BMS currently. So presently, we're having our staff, all grades five through eight, participating in peer learning walks this year. And we're looking specifically at extending our professional learning opportunities and with a focus on accountable talk. So we've had some professional learning opportunities around accountable talk. You can see here, this poster is created by seventh and eighth-grade teachers. They've been working really hard on making sure that this is implemented across the grade levels, five through eight. And this is something that in our peer walks, we are looking for as we're going around to classrooms. So this is incorporated, we're incorporating intentional planning with a focus specifically on student discourse and common assessments. Okay. And some highlights from MCAS that I am happy to report out. So our math MCAS scores for students in our African-American Black subgroup have increased 10% from last year to this year. Our ELA MCAS scores for our 504 subgroup, according to internal measures, so we're using our Lincoln to identify this as 504 is not part of the DESI subgroup, they've increased by 13% from last year to this year. And then to piggyback a bit on what Erin Brown has talked about with implementation of curriculum, you can see here our math MCAS scores in grades five through eight. This is a combination of five through eight. We are on a steady increase over the past five years. And the picture here shows exactly what that looks like. So starting at 31%, and now combined efforts at 46% meeting and exceeding. Moving on, looking again, I know you've seen these slides a lot tonight and six in line, but grade-five and six, five, grade-five ELA MCAS is 36% meeting and exceeding. I should note that this is really only the third month into new curriculum in grade-five. So that is why we're seeing a bit of an implementation dip there. Grade-six is at 44% for ELA. And then moving on to grade-seven and eight, we have 42% at both grades-seven and eight for meeting and exceeding. And on to math, in grades-five and six. In grade-five math, we have 44%. In grade-six, 53%, which is our highest score at the middle school for math. Grade-seven, I do want to highlight, they've made some significant gains and has been a grade level that we have really focused on. Teachers have been doing exceptional work, extremely hard work. And they're at 48% with grade-eight math at 39%. We have a lot of MCAS at the middle school. We have math, we have ELA, we have science, we have civics. So for science, we have two grade levels, five and eight. You can see here that grade-five is at 49% and grade-eight at 37%. This was our first year for civics. We are at 42%, and that was above the state for grade-eight civics. Moving on to next steps. We are excited to be continuing our partnership with TNTP. Every time I stand in front of you, I talk about them. They've been such a wonderful resource for us. So we're continuing with our collaborative coaching cycle. This is providing actionable feedback to teachers, promoting reflections with teachers and differentiating the support that we provide for them. In addition to that, another focus for going forward is looking at writing instruction, which is an area of growth for us at the middle school. So we're looking at ensuring that we have vertical alignment by using common rubrics in optimizing calibration between the grade levels. Third area that we're looking at is continuing to strengthen the use of common assessments and engage in explicit data-driven planning to make sure that we're hitting the needs of all students. And last but not least, that I've talked a little bit about already, we have implemented peer learning walks this year in addition with the district learning walks. And the focus here is on all content areas, and it's to observe and strengthen our student discourse in both speaking and writing.
Do you want to go? I can go first. Okay. I have a wonder. I'm a little curious what our fourth graders' expectations are as they transition up to fifth graders. Are we seeing summer learning loss? Are they given math packets? For instance, I know that the librarians have the summer reading challenges as part of that. But is there an intentionality to help bridge that sort of transition from the lower school to the middle school?
There is intentionality there. There is summer work given for fourth graders, actually all grade levels, to help with that summer slide. In terms of curriculum, if we're looking at math, it is the same curriculum, so it's ZERN, that's being used in grade-four and coming up to grade-five, which I think is important, that we have that consistency of curriculum with the transition. And then in addition to that, our ELA is wit and wisdom, which in fifth grade continues from the elementary school. So really, it's a consistency from K to five. And then we switch curriculums once we hit grade-six through eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. Excuse me. So I, I, I'm happy to hear about the accomplishments and the highlights. And I don't mean to diminish this with this question, but the, the numbers are still really low. Do you, do you feel, what do you think that's attributed to? Do you think, do you think the class sizes are too big at the middle school? Do you think it's, just curious what you think the issue is, that the numbers are so low in, in meeting expectations or exceeding?
So I think there's a number of things here that are happening. And I think I can speak from being an elementary principal for eight years and coming up to the middle school. It's a very large building. And so things are operating a little bit different. And also, I think a huge piece of what is happening is we're looking at adolescents as opposed to our elementary-level kids. This is not to make an excuse, but they're going through a lot at the middle school. And if you compare our data to schools that are similar to ours, we are actually right in the mix of where we should be. So I think that's just another lens of looking at that. It's been a challenge for me personally, I'll be honest, of coming from the elementary and coming from a school that we had really high achievement to coming to a much larger scale, larger school that we've had to scale that and work differently with, with teachers. But I will say, teachers are working extremely hard. There's a lot of collaboration that is happening. So I, I do see, over the last five years, that we have had, we're on a trajectory of improvement.
And I think, you know, if I don't mind me interrupting, is after the pandemic, you know, certainly the adolescents in the, in the middle school level across the state probably had the biggest struggle coming back. So there was that, that the, the staff was working really hard to meet the needs of students after the pandemic for a couple of years. And then we doubled down with curriculum started at the elementary schools and then came after the fact here. So there was years of piloting things, deciding on curriculum and implementation. And that implementation just certainly affects it. They're on the right trajectory. Because I think, again, when you talk about having a stable curriculum, stable administration, stable staff, you know, that comes with it. And so I think they're on the right trajectory and moving in the right direction, but certainly want to keep that going.
But, but do we think there's too many kids in, in the classes to make it so that every student can learn to their potential in the middle school?
I think the class sizes are appropriate for what we currently have. We don't, if we were looking at class sizes of 30, I would be saying something very different. But most of our classes are between 24 and 25 students. There are some exceptions to that, that in the upper grades in some of our accelerated classes, we do have higher numbers. But our data, again, is showing a continued growth in that area.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mary Kay.
I, I would love to dive into, not tonight, not at 10 o'clock. The, no, more, more of a deeper dive into class sizes. But, you know, we know that the state Mass School Building Authority sizes new schools based on the number of students. You can only build somebody square feet per student. And that this school, when it was built, was built for class sizes of 24 and 25. And, and that's not a Beverly thing, that is a state thing. So I, you know, I, I would love to hear, again, not tonight, but, you know, some, some real numbers on, on all of our, you know, all of our neighboring districts, et cetera, et cetera. Because that's, you know, i- i- if, if you're working in a building that's been built fairly recently, if you're working in, you know, if your kids are in a building that has been through the MSBA program, that's the model. So.
Oh, boy. Okay. I saw Dr. Silva.
On the hot seat at 10 o'clock at night.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, Dr. Silva first.
I think the, the way the data is presented, I would, I would prefer to see a contin, like, a year-to-year continuum as opposed to just a snapshot. Then, I mean, it gives a little bit more perspective in terms of where you're headed or, you know, how far you've gone or what trajectory there is. So I, I would like to suggest, like, in the future, that we consider having, you know, a three- or four-year line plot as opposed to a bar plot.
I have no problem with that. We just have, I, I knew that time was going to be of the essence tonight. And we can dig into subgroup data. We dig into a lot of data, so that's no problem at all.
Quickly, Mary.
Yeah, I mean, can you go back to the one slide that shows a five-year? Because that's.
Slide 34.
I mean, that, that's the kind of thing you're, you're pointing towards. And it is, it is illustrative and helpful, absolutely.
But I mean, in a line plot where you have the, in the previous bar where you had the four colors, they'd be the four-colored line plots to showing you the trajectory of each of those bins.
Yep, we can, we can certainly do that where it's side-by-side. Yep. I do think that this is a good example of the hard work of teachers and also the use of effective curriculum. That does show, again, over five years, it is a slow growth, but it is a continued growth. And this is a combination, again, of the entire school. So I think that, that does demonstrate that. I believe the middle school is moving forward. I feel confident about that, but it's not moving at a very fast pace.
Is this a segment or the entire school?
That's the entire school. It's combined grades five through eight. Yep. In the area of math.
Okay.
Ms. Quelo, Ms. Biznick, then myself.
So people also got to take into consideration that when kids are in elementary school, kids are little. They do what their parents tell them to do. You better listen to your teacher. They go in, they listen to their teachers, they listen to their principals, they do their tests, they do their work. When they get to the high school level, oh, man. You know, I got my career ahead of me. They're gonna take their tests seriously. They're gonna take these MCAS scores in their SATs seriously. Middle school is tough. Middle school is where they push back. They're like, I ain't doing this. I don't care. I'm not doing this work. I don't care what you say. I'm not turning in that assignment. It is tough. I've had kids, I have kids, I've had three kids in here. One is currently in here. You have those kids that sit in classroom and they refuse to do the tests. And if you have a kid that refuses to do one of those tests, you have maybe 15 kids out of the whole class that refuse to do the test, that's going to affect the whole entire score. Do you have maybe any kind of data on kids that didn't take the test? Maybe kids that were absent, purposely didn't come in? Because that affects the whole entire score, too. We're not seeing the big picture, we're just seeing that picture. And that can affect her whole entire score for every single class, every single grade.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Ms. Biznick, did you have a question or comment?
I have a question because I just heard you say some of your older advanced sections are, are a little more crowded. This body, at the end of last year, made a change to the budget to keep our fifth-grade class sizes smaller. And we quote-unquote "took" someone out of your upper grades and put them down into the lower grades. So I believe the fifth-grade class size is closer to 21 than the 24 or 25 that are in the upper grades. And I wish to ask you if you think, either anecdotally or via your data, if that change was a good change?
Yes, I do think it was a good change. I think the numbers in grade-five and six are very acceptable. And they are, you are correct that they're in the 21 range. correct that they're in the 21 range, excuse me. And we do have a three-person team in grade six, which there was a lot of concern about that last year, if you remember when we spoke, and I'm happy to report that that is going extremely well.
And when you say that it's going extremely well, I'm, I guess I would feel, I, I feel like, okay, if I have a class size of 21, if I have a three-grade team that's quote "going extremely well," that I might see better results in those standardized tests. So, we will always have these kinds of difficult decisions to make, and we would hope that, just like we want our student, students to learn and fail forward, that this body could do the same thing. And so, if we made a mistake last year in moving that person out of the upper grades to leave larger sizes in the upper grades, but to concentrate on, on looking at a 21 at the lower grades, I guess I'm looking for a return on my investment, to be like brutal about, about a number, because it is, it is a physical investment, and we're going to have to make those same kind of choices again in three months.
Yes, yes. I think it was a good investment. I think that having a strong mathematical foundation to move forward is critical. So, having that, those numbers be a little bit lower in grade fives and, five and six, particularly in grade five, where it's a transitional year, is, has been beneficial for instruction. The position that was moved was a support position, and that person is now down in the sixth grade. I said last year, ideally to have both would have been great, but not manageable at that time. If I could go back, I would make the same decision that was made.
Fantastic, thank you.
And then, I just, out of curiosity, again, kind of in the vein of Ms. Quelo's comment, I know that devices are a novelty in the younger grades, they're a little bit more commonplace for our, for our middle schoolers, and I wonder what role our educators can have in hyping the importance of doing your best. I think I reported out a couple of years ago, anecdotally, it was cool to just click through, right? And that affects the entire building's presentation. I think people can even look in a certain student's file and see an absolute plummet and then a bounce back once her parent talked to her about the seriousness of testis. But I, I do wonder what we can do with adolescents to encourage students to do their best work.
Yep. I think you bring up a really good point, and I think as students are taking assessments, I do think the delivery of the assessment is really important, and talking about doing your best work and letting students know that this is important work. And I think our teachers are doing that. You know, on behalf of the middle school, I guess I, I do need to say, we're a really unique building. You know, any place that is filled with 1,400 adolescents is going to be challenging, and it is challenging. And, you know, I think right now, there's a lot going on in society, there's a lot going on around social media, there's a lot going around behaviors, and, and we're seeing that in the, in the middle school. It's a microcosm of what's happening, and so I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that those challenges are present. But again, I feel like teachers are working really hard, the administrative team is working really hard, and we're facing those challenges every day.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, 27 short slides on the high school and we'll be done, so. No, in, in closing, I, I, I guess I wanted to start off with, with our highlights, which for the second consecutive year, our accountability percentile is at 48. That's the highest we've had going all the way back, those are the two highest years going all the way back to 2010 and beyond, as far as from the accountability data. So, we're proud of that. It, it just speaks to the really hard, good work that our teachers are doing every day with our students, so very proud of them and very proud of the results. We continue to see a lot of growth from, as we get students to their 10th-grade test, we see a lot of growth from eighth to 10th through algebra and geometry and math and so on and so forth. As far as, that tends to be where we're gaining a lot of our points in that accountability metric. Within our subgroups, our Hispanic and, or Latino group was our highest achieving group. They not only had great gains in growth, they also had high achievement, so those two scores together, they were, they were our highest achieving group. Although our, although our graduation rate remains high, one thing I want to point, or two things I wanted to point out was our extended engagement, which is getting students through a five-year cohort. So, once, if they aren't able to finish within those four years, holding on to those students, seeing them through and getting them a diploma within that fifth year, and that leads to a, a really low dropout rate for us. So, in, in other words, keeping them engaged, when they recalculate that dropout rate, it actually lowers our rate even further. So, that's a lot of good behind-the-scenes work that people like Mr. Reto's, our outreach counselor, a lot of our support people, they're, they're working really hard with these students and working with our students in our stay program to get them through and over that finish line, although it might not be the traditional path, they're still getting there.
Can you explain what the 48 percentile accountability means? Where does that come from?
Um, no, I'm kidding a little bit. It's, it's pretty complicated. It's a, it's the state accountability report that, that comes out from DESI, and there's, you can earn certain points in, in many different categories, anything from growth in MCAS, achievement in MCAS, advanced coursework by your students, attendance.
So, it's an algorithm that the state puts together
Yeah.
that allows you to collect points and record it out?
Yeah, you got it. Yep.
Okay, so, okay.
On that, attendance didn't get us any points, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, 48 without attendance.
And, and beyond last year, traditionally, that's, that's a huge strength of ours, where we're getting three, there's a total of four points, you know, we're getting three and four points usually year to year for that.
Yeah.
Ms. Brown eloquently talked through these, the ELA and math results, and here's science, and what I would say is we were, you know, I, I think we're in a phase right now where, where, we're going to see if there's a drop with students and, and how seriously they take this test, if it's not attached to graduation. Last year, I, I think it kind of, for the most part, held where we've traditionally been, but, you know, we're, we're hoping to carry that through, just like my fellow principals have talked about, we use that as a really important data point for us to be able to give a direction on where we need to lend more supports. We always are trying to move students up the, up the ladder here from partially to meeting to advanced, and so those are, those are all things we continue to work towards.
And the state retained the carrot of the John and Abigail Adams that's tied to this, correct?
Certainly, yeah, yeah.
So, there's a financial incentive for students to take the test seriously.
Yes, for any of the state schools, yeah. So, that's still there and a wonderful opportunity. So, this is, as I spoke, this is our, our four-year cohort, so if you look along the top, although, although those numbers remain high, one or two students slides that down a percentage point or so, and as you go into the next slide, uh, next slide here, oh, I'm sorry, I had it on my, so as you go into the extended and dropout rate, you see that the N number is still very strong there as it extends into that fifth year as we're retaining students and keeping them engaged. We're, we're proud of our participation and success rate in our advanced coursework. For us, that typically means advanced placement, although dual enrollment in some other courses apply to that, but we continued, I, I think this is the sixth straight year that we've made gains in participation and success in advanced placement coursework. Next steps for us, continue to work on our identified instructional strategy of increasing verbal and written discourse within the classroom. We continue to look to strengthen our instructional best practices through our learning walks, we're really happy with that, peer learning walks along with administrative and district-wide. And then continuing our faculty work groups around our assessment structures in alignment with the new CD requirements, which I talked through earlier, so. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to also just thank the administrators for the work that they do. I think our coaches, you can see the use of coaches, curriculum directors across the district, the use of data, the time that they meet, the work that they do with staff in terms of instructional practices is key to our success, and they've done a wonderful job along with the teachers. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, and sorry for keeping you out so late. We really appreciate you. Dr. Cushing, was there anything left on the superintendent's report?
I think two-plus hours is good enough.
Okay. We're going to return quickly to the school committee chair update. We had one item remaining, that's just a recap of our upcoming meeting and dates. As we heard in our earlier meeting, we do have financial forecasting in December on the second and ninth Tuesdays. And then we have our regular school committee meeting on the 10th, as advertised. That will be an opportunity for the public to address the body. We have SISL planned for 6:15, also on the 10th. And a reminder to school committee members, our student advisory council meets on the even months throughout the year, so December being an even month, we plan to meet with them at 5:00 PM via Zoom only. We're going to try to continue that remote option to see if we can have more participation at 5:00 on the 10th. Then on the 17th, we have our finance and facilities meeting at 6:15, followed by a committee of the whole at 7:30. That's the last planned meeting date of this term for the school committee. And in the new year, the inauguration is planned for Monday, January 5th, and you will need to work with your president stand-in on setting that agenda in advance for your organizational meeting later that evening is typically when this committee will reorganize. So, do keep those dates on your calendar. Additionally, we did receive another demand to bargain, and we will need to talk about how we can accommodate negotiations as we enter the end of this term. Final item on our agenda is an executive session, which I believe we will not use this evening, we will table that to our next regular meeting on, what, was there someone cheering? No. Okay.
I was through the way.
Okay. So, we want to thank BEV CAM, again, our administrators, for staying so late with us this evening, also our House of Representative, Representative Bowen, and our Senator, Senator Joan Lovely for joining us and working through the technological challenges. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I heard Ms. Quelo and Dr. Silva. Whoever you wrote down, you tell me. We do need to do a roll call, because Dr. McKenzie's still with us online, and Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kim Quelo?
Yes.
Ken M. McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lauren De Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel. Time is 10:20 PM, we are now adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.